Welcome, everybody. We're here for our Picken County Board of County Commissioners work session. Today is Tuesday, March 4th, Mardi Gras Day. And we've got a lot on our agenda today. The first item unfortunately canceled, so we're starting at 10:15 here. But we're going to jump right into our update on the Picken County Land Use Policy Guidelines, a document we don't refer to all that much but plays a part. And we're going to kind of learn more about how that plays a part in some of the updates that we're going to be doing.
Thank you, Rob. Cindy Hibben, the Community Development Director, and Ellen Sisano, our Long Range Planner. And Ellen and I are embarking on the update of the Picken County Neighborhood Master Plans issued by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And part of that update entails taking a look at the policies that guide those master plans. And when you think about the history of how those policies came about, the policies are actually developed as part of the land use code. And the land use code, as you know, is a regulatory document. It's like in 2003, the state required that we have a complete master plan for the entire county. And the way we chose to do, to implement the state's requirement for a master plan was to work with neighborhood caucus groups primarily. And then also, we had earlier the 1987 Down Valley Plan for areas that were not included in caucuses. So at that time, we had a pre-2006 code. Today, you work under the 2006 Land Use Code. And prior to 2006, the policies that were in that land use code helped us develop what we call our user-friendly land use policy guidelines. And they're attached in your packet. And those guidelines are meant to be a little bit more reader-friendly for citizens working on their caucus master plans. But they are to relay the intent that comes out of the land use code policies. So I put together a little chart behind you, Rob, that shows you the land use code policies pre-2006 guided us into development of the policy guidelines which are attached that then assisted us with the development and assisted citizens with the development of the 2003 Neighborhood Master Plans. Then, in 2006, we updated the land use code. But we didn't have a need to or an occasion to update the policy guidelines of the citizen use until now. So what we're doing now is we're trying to shore up both of those documents. And the Planning and Zoning Commission spent two meetings recently looking at the land use policy guideline document as well as Chapter 2 of the 2006 Land Use Code. And made some suggestions that they wanted to bring forward to you. And the next step, if you believe that these are good changes and relevant changes to the policies that will guide the master plans, then we will bring those back to you as code amendments to also update the land use code. So there's a little bit of, you know, a lot going on here. But I hope that that clarifies where we are and where we've come. And I put in a little red star down at the bottom of the left-hand chart that I put up that says, "The P&amp;Z has recommended policy guideline updates." We're at the stage now where it's being reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners. And if you agree with the changes or even make some changes to the recommendations, we will then, as staff, bring those back to you as a code amendment formally for the land use code. So is that...
I have a question about the last thing that you just said. So the policy guidelines will be brought back to us as a code amendment change? I don't understand that.
No, the policies that are changing -- excuse me, I said time limit. The policies that are changing that then changed the 2006 Land Use Code policies will come back to you for amendment to formally amend the...
So anything in the code that has to change as a result of these changes, not necessarily that there will or won't be changes. This doesn't change our code, is basically what you're saying.
Right.
If there is a code change, it'll come back. So I guess my next question, are there, of these changes, which, because it seemed to me that most of these changes were kind of language changes, just kind of explaining things a little bit more in depth, more than anything else. It didn't seem to me that there's anything being put in this that will directly require a code change.
There actually, there are several word changes, changes that update existing policies. But also, a lot has happened in the community, in the economy, in the world since 2003 and 2006. So there were some topic areas that we felt were not covered at all or adequately in the existing land use code policies. In addition to work on the 2006 Land Use Code, since we last updated these guidelines, the county also adopted new strategic plan goals. So there have been some changes that have occurred. And as a result, we actually added several policy topics, including, and I'd be glad to walk through them individually with you if you'd like, but including the topic of energy, climate change, and Planning Commission asked us to add some verbiage relating to federal land exchange. And then, we also added another new section on livable and supportive community. And that one in particular is really coming out of the strategic plan goals. So there are, there is some new language and there are some new topics that we just felt were more relevant now than they were back in 2003 and 2006.
Well, we don't feel that they vary the overall philosophy of the county.
Yeah, so for example, maybe to answer your question, Robert, the way I interpret this, if you look under Energy, where you're adding some following language, "Picken County supports a reduction in energy consumption for both the county organization and community at large." So down the road, that may mean that we may have a code amendment as relates to the building codes.
Definitely.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I guess that's what I'm getting at. It may lead to a building code change, but we won't necessarily adopt this language into the building code.
That's correct. But we, it's quite possible that we will recommend that you actually add, currently, the land use code policy section does not have a paragraph regarding energy. It does not have a paragraph regarding climate change. And it does not have a paragraph regarding livable and supportive community. It's possible that you may not want to actually add those policies as provisions in the land use code. The policies in the land use code really are meant to convey broad county philosophy. And these topics in particular are topics that have been more relevant in your discussions around county philosophy in the last 10 years. So we thought that it was particularly as we work with caucuses on their Neighborhood Master Plans and long-term land use visions, that we address these topics because they have become more relevant. And, and we also are, will most likely be recommending that they be included as topics in the land use code policy section as we move forward. But for the short term, we'd like to address them as overarching policies as we work on the master plans. And really, these policies help us when we work with the caucus groups, with the public, to frame the discussion about long-term land use visions for the community. And they provide some sideboards, too, to say, you know, this is generally what the county philosophy regarding this particular topic is, you know. And so if a caucus is going way out in left field with respect to something like, I can say with respect to transportation, with respect to mass transit, we could say, you know what, it really is a philosophy, a policy of the county to support mass transit. So if you're recommending that mass transit be obliterated as an alternative to the automobile in Picken County, that's probably not going to fly. So that's a quick offhand example of how the policies might be used in our discussions with the caucuses.
But it also doesn't really mean anything until it gets into a code state, in the sense that if a caucus makes a recommendation that mass transit should be obliterated, you know, done away with, as you said, that's a recommendation to us. The caucuses are advisory boards to the B.O.C.C.
That is true.
And we may take them into account, but we could always go back to a policy section like this and say, you know, it doesn't really fit our policies, so we're not going to enact a code getting rid of mass transit in your caucus area.
Exactly. That is how we hope to use the policies, both in this guideline, which is intended to just be a little bit more user-friendly, less regulatory sounding, and in the land use code policies, which will be adopted as.
So I'm a little confused on the terminology, "land use code policies." So the land use code policies is a section of our land use code, which basically has a general feeling of what direction we'd like to go in without really saying, "You can or can't build here," or "You can't do this," but...
That's correct. The land use policies and the land use code are adopted, they are regulation, they are adopted by ordinance. And they direct, they are a broad, they are a statement of broad policy and philosophy of the county on a particular topic. And they direct the more detailed land use code provisions that may, that relate to those policies. So yeah, if there's something about climate change in one of the broad policies in the land use code that says, "We support energy, reduction in energy consumption," that might lead to a code amendment in a more detailed provision in the land use code that specifically speaks to energy use in building, probably be in the building code, but in the building code, so.
Especially as the solar provisions.
Yeah. It is...
It's an advisory section of our land use code. Or a policy, or a, it doesn't say what you can and can't do, it says what our general philosophy is.
Correct. It's advisory, but it's adopted by ordinance as a recommendation.
Steve?
So just to make it totally clear, the policy guidelines, which is this section here, is what we're being asked to look at today. The land use code general policies are the Chapter 1, which may or may not get changed based on changes that we made to this. So when you go to the caucuses to look at the master plans, are you only taking this part and not the land use code?
Yes.
For their general guidance on the master plan updates for the caucuses?
That was the intent in 2003 when we developed it as a policy guideline. It was just to help people get through the generalized topic areas. And if anyone's interested, of course, I can go in the land use code and work, but that was the idea.
Okay.
So, sorry for the confusion.
No, I just, I just wanted to clarify for my mind and for the public and...
Thank you. You don't often, this board and even the P&amp;Z, this has been a good exercise because we don't often go back to the policies to rethink why we are where we are with our regulations. So this has been a helpful exercise. On a daily basis, you deal with the code provisions that are a result of these policies. So we're really taking a giant step backwards. And we'll get into the specifics of these with you in a second. We're hoping that this, you know, isn't an exercise in wordsmithing. We really just want to grab your overall intent. But, and also, if we have time, like to spend a couple minutes to update you on what we're doing with the master plan updates and where we are with all that.
Other questions, or should we have Cindy go through some of the nuances? Steve, do you want...
I had a point, a specific point about one of the wording of one of the proposed changes. And that was in the energy policy.
Page five.
And it says, the second sentence says, "Mineral development should be limited to that which provides energy." I'll stop right there. When you say mineral development, I think also of gravel and alabaster and silver, coal, iron ore, different things that have been mined in Picken County or are being mined right now. And they're not included, well, the coal would be an energy resource, but the others are minerals, but they're not energy-related.
Okay.
And so that makes it sound like we don't want any mining of gravel or any, anything else in the county.
So mineral development for energy.
Well, it should be mineral and energy development.
Or mineral and, or just economic development.
We can work on it, because we understand this is a section just for the energy portion. But that's a great, that's a great clarification. Thank you. Yeah.
So just a wordsmithing thing, I think, to clarify that.
Well, I mean, you know, you're sort of asking the impossible, though, on this thing, you know, without degradation to the, seriously?
Well, this is our, this is our, these are the...
I know, but if you were to read that policy, that would, the policy, at the same time, is talking about mineral and energy development, you're saying, essentially, you can't have it.
Well, none of it degrades the air and water quality.
Right.
And honestly, in addition to...
But that's just not the case. I mean, you know, at the gravel pit, they put out dust and all kinds of stuff. You haven't shut down the gravel pit. So you allow, you allow, under certain standards, you allow that gravel pit to exist. It's not that there's not, there's not side effects to it. So, you know, it just, I can see it in an aspirational sense, but I can't see it actually in any kind of realistic sense.
Well, here, there's no real, it doesn't get tied down to measurement tools. We all might not agree with the level of air quality standards that are out there in the state or in the EPA, but at some point, these will have to be tied to standards. It may be that our air quality, you know, is degraded, but not beyond a certain standard. I don't know how this would really get implemented. Like you say, it's that, it's putting out the aspirational statement, and then the details work from there.
I mean, I would say, but that's not what this is saying. What this is saying is, as Michael says, "No mineral development," as opposed to saying with the minimal amounts, or, you know, the minimal amounts of degradation to air, air and water quality and quantity. And then, the minimal can be judged by future boards or by this board.
We had the same discussion.
Or you use the best standards possible. In other words...
Best practice.
And best practices could be judged by the current board as a flexible term. But this is saying, "Without hurting the air or water," which is, quite frankly, you dig a hole in the back here, you're going to get some dust in the air and you're, you know.
It's just, I think, you know, you have to say that, you just have to recognize that it's possible to do these things to the best possible standards. And...
So this statement is a little too concrete and too modified to be a bit more realistic while still achieving the desired...
Well, even given, just given, as I pointed out, the gravel pit, there's degradation going on there right now. And so if you were to use this as the qualifying goal for that gravel pit, you'd shut it down.
Although, as Steve has said, gravel really was not the intended mineral.
But it is a mineral.
But, and so we need to be specific.
And it's under the Colorado mining regulations, so...
So we need to be specific as to which minerals...
Energy and minerals.
Targeting.
You know, this, this, there's a historic basis for mineral development in Picken County and has been and continues to be. And so I think you have to recognize that. And then, there's the potential for energy development. There is some energy development in Picken County. So the two go hand in hand, really. They're extractive industries. Both of them are extractive industries. And you just have to recognize that, that you're going to be challenged by either one, by alabaster mining or by fracking in certain parts of the county. So you have to improve them both.
I think maybe, we can look at it and work on it. I think maybe we should have a section on extractive industries versus what we were trying to get at with energy.
Okay. Well, that's, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, maybe something like that. But I think what I'm hearing you say, and I may be wrong, but is that any time there's any disturbance, obviously, there's some degradation. Is that short-term degradation or long-term degradation is kind of a question. When we dig a hole, we're going to get dust. When we go into the gravel pit, we're going to get dust. When we, all of that. But is there overall long-term degradation to our air quality in the community, I think is where the P&amp;Z was trying to go. So if that fits with your philosophy, then we can go back and work on some of that wording.
Well, but, you know, the gravel pit's been in existence for 40 or 50 years now. There's been air degradation for that 40 or 50 years. Is that permanent? It looked permanent to me. It might end, but, you know, it's about the practices during the extraction that's important. Not whether or not it goes away in 50 years, but during the time you were side by side with that industry, you have to maintain some, the best possible standards.
We did go back and forth on minimal. Yeah.
Steve, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, I was thinking we probably do need two sections instead of one. Have one for extractive, or extractive industries in general, maybe then a specific one just about energy. But any extractive, extractive industry, whether, I mean, you could include logging in, it's something that, they have huge land use impacts. They're a special case. It's not like building a house or something like that. It's, so there's almost a different set of rules they go by, and we have to look at them differently.
And I agree with that. You can set the two if you are, you could put them together if the standard is the same for both, which, again, it's a general policy to minimize air degradation or whatever. I agree with that policy. But I use the word "minimize."
Right.
If the policy is different for minerals versus energy extraction, for instance, what I think this is saying, and the way I read it, is no energy extraction in Picken County, period. That's the way I read this paragraph. And it doesn't say minerals. I mean, we could do a separate section that say, "Well, minerals are okay as long as it's not energy minerals like gravel or alabaster or whatever." But I'm not so sure that that's the policy of this board. And if it is, let's, you know, let's call it out for a vote. Is it the policy of the board that there is no energy mineral extractions in Picken County as a policy, period?
I don't think that's the...
But that's the way I read this, because it says, "Without degradation to air or water." And, you know, you could always make an argument that there is some degradation to air and water with energy extraction. So basically, this is saying, "No energy extraction." That's the way I read it. And I don't think that's the policy of Picken County. If it is, let's, let's, you know, get the policymakers to, to make that the policy.
Cindy, we're starting out. How would you write?
Michael?
Oh, well, the first sentence, "Picken County supports a reduction in energy consumption." I mean, I sort of understand that, but the fact of the matter, I think Picken County today is using more energy than it did 10 years ago. So it's something different, actually. It's something about efficient energy. And so with the addition of the hospital, the addition of the music associates, the addition, all that building, I would be, you know, does that, have we actually used less energy with the addition of Escalades and Suburbans and, you know, have we used less? We're using more energy, but we have to use what energy, there's a limited amount of energy in an efficient way. That's what I'm, but it could lead to an overall reduction. But I don't think, I don't think we've done a particularly good job on energy use.
Does, may I respond?
Yeah.
Yeah, just so you know, this, this line comes directly out of your, the resolution that you, gosh, 2012, I think, the 2012 climate change resolution that you adopted. So it could change at your point.
I don't really argue with it, but it's not quite right, because, because it's, going forward, what I'd like to see is that per square foot, we're going to use less energy. But that might, but if we keep adding square feet, we're going to use more energy. So...
So it supports efficient use of energy to ultimately reduce energy consumption.
Yeah. I mean, something like that.
Okay. Good, good. Great. Come on, thank you.
It seems like we want to be more efficient in the use of our energy with the ultimate goal of reducing our carbon footprint, which then ties into climate change.
Are there any other thoughts relating to this particular topic? I think those are all really good, insightful comments, and we can work on making this a little more...
Yeah, and I think you have to, you have to put it in, in light of, one of the big criticisms from the gas industry is, "Well, you guys don't want to have any extractive industries in your county." And yet, you have homes and structures and everything that uses a vast amount of energy. So I think, you know, the response to that has to be, "We are working on a way of making the efficient use of all our energy and with the goal of either reducing carbon footprint or reducing total, total energy use within the county." And, and so that has to be a response to the people who say, "Listen, it might be fine to live in Picken County, but the rest of the world has to deal with extracting those industries to put into your houses."
That's very true. And then, Rob, if it's all right, I'd love to just make sure that we, we don't need to make changes to any other of these or to have more discussion about the other remaining topics on page that are highlighted. We can either go through the document, which is easy to read because everything is redlined, or I've also tried to just highlight the major changes in the memo, so that's a little more, that's a summary for you. The next, climate change was the next major topic that had not been included previously that we added. And a lot of the verbiage here, well, actually, this, some of this verbiage comes out, again, of that same resolution regarding climate change that you adopted in 2012. But we added, we added some language specific to preparedness for wildfire, flood, and drought... and drought, and also worked with the City of Aspen Canary Initiative Director on adding some, some language on biodiversity, resilient infrastructure, and economic resilience. So it really is a new, altogether new section of policies. And I, I'd like a little bit of feedback as to whether it's appropriate or not.
I would add, I mean, it seems to me that the word climate change has bounced around too much, and, and because, quite frankly, the.
You should be on PZ.
The whole, the whole valley is formed by climate, climate change. The glacial structure and geology was climate change. So we're not really talking about climate change. Climate change is existing, has existed, and will continue to exist on this planet as long as there's a planet. What we're talking about is accelerated unnatural climate change due to human energy use, and that's what the problem is. Not climate change per se, but, but that we've accelerated climate change in a way that's unnatural, and that's our challenge.
We did have discussion at the Planning Commission about the heading of this topic, and in that 2012 resolution that you adopted, it's actually called climate protection, and so I started with that, and that wasn't very well accepted by the Planning Commission. So we went back and forth on, had several topics.
Preparedness.
Preparedness. But accelerated climate change, climate change due to, I don't know how, how descriptive you want the heading to be, but if you think climate change really is not what this is about, we can work on.
I think there's more of a crisis in the climate change. You know, that we're facing something different from previous climate changes.
Climate change, crisis?
Yes. So, and, and these things about wildfire, flood, water availability, those, those exist whether or not we have accelerated climate change or not. Those are things we have to worry about all the time.
I really like, maybe in the, in the intro paragraph is just use that one sentence or so that Michael stated in terms of the accelerated climate change based on human consumption of energy, however Michael phrased it. I think that sort of explains what, at least to me, what, what we're trying to get at for climate change.
Yeah, and you can tie it into the second sentence there, which says at the same time, Pickens County endeavors to address causes of climate change, because that's what we're really talking about, the human cause of climate change.
Human causes, I, I think is the, the key, because there's, there's all kinds of causes of climate change. They quite, haven't quite figured out why we have ice ages and why they, what the rate that they happen at. But we're dealing with human caused climate change.
Yes, good, good clarification. I, I assume that it's, is it, is it, is it a good idea to include this topic in, in all? I assume that that is.
No, I, I would agree.
And this, to me, was worded a lot more in the general sense than the paragraph that we previously talked about, which was, like I said, I read it as no, no energy mining.
Too specific, too.
Yeah. Which could potentially be something that the code, that we vote on as a code thing, but until we get to that point, I don't think it should be that specific in here. Can we go back a couple pages to the Federal Land Exchange?
Absolutely, that's page.
12.
12, thank you. And this, this section was added as a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and just as background, well, let's, let's just go with, go ahead.
Well, my, my specific question, and we had a lot of discussion about this via letters that were written by Open Space and Trails and our sediments of various board members regarding the Wexner Land Exchange, of course. So it's kind of seems like that's specifically what it's referring to. And I do remember having a discussion about comparable lands within the Roaring Fork watershed. But I also remember the discussion about acreage exchange, and, and I was very much not in favor of that, because you're never going to have the exact amount of acres being exchanged, and some acreage may be much more valuable than other acreage. So when you use the word acreage, to me, it means, you know, one square foot for one square foot, and exchanges don't happen that way. I believe that there needs to be, again, a step back in this language to a broader sense of equal value, and then the board down the road can determine what the value is, you know, how, how value is, is interpreted, as opposed to equal quantity of public-owned acreage.
It's actually, it's equal quality.
Quality.
And so.
Public-owned acreage.
So just take out acreage and put land.
So the acreage is the word that I get stuck up with a little bit, because it could be, you know, one Level B acreage for one Level B acreage, and, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know. The acreage was the, the word that I, when we did language and letters back on the Wexner thing, there was some, there was, you know, I don't remember if it was just me or if it was a few of us that had an issue with the acreage exchange.
Yeah, I, I was there, like, for the discussion, and I do remember your, your opinion with, particularly with respect to this phrase, and I thought this was where it had landed, but I.
And I don't remember exactly if there was a paragraph that was written that reflects that, but George?
I, I think the discussion stemmed from the idea originally was acre for acre, and I think we evolved to look at, what I think this says is equal quality. So it's not per se one acre per one acre, but it's, it's more of a broader statement that talks about equal quality of the total acreage. So I'm okay with this.
And it could be clarified even more by taking the acre, the word acreage out and put land.
Land.
Or the owned land.
Yeah, it's.
I like that change. The board would be okay with it. Acreage is a measurement, land isn't.
No, that's, that's a, that sounds like a good, a good qualification.
Steve, is that okay with you? Michael?
I have two other, two other topics that were off of that.
Yep, Steve?
That one. One, you kind of were asking on the ski area language.
Yes.
Whether to do the.
What page you want to.
Page six. Whether to use the existing language with a couple of wordsmithing things or to change it to the whole new section. And I like the whole new section, I think, oh, it sounds better to me than modifying the existing section.
I like the new section, again, because it had a broad policy basis, you know? It was when consistent with the policies of our partners and the Forest Service and that sort of stuff, and I thought the language was good in the new, in the new language.
And there was one other general discussion.
Michael and George, I know.
I was, I'm sorry.
I'm on a roll page.
We're skipping around a lot, so it's hard for me to follow.
I can't find the right page. Page six is the.
It's page six.
Page six of the.
Policy guidelines.
Policy guideline.
What page is it in the memo? Because I'm just looking.
The memo is the same language, sorry, is on page three of the memorandum.
Page three.
Nine, 10, 10 of the packet.
Yeah, this is very helpful.
10 on the packet.
That's the page right there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a different one?
They have it as a PDF, so they're looking at the pages of the PDF.
All the pages that are included in the packet then get numbered via the PDF. You have separate pages numbered on the document itself.
Yes.
And so that's the difficulty when you translate from paper editions to, to computer editions, and so it's very hard to follow back and forth, because everybody, we just had three page numbers given of where we were.
Right. So we'll try to work off the same.
Did you find it, George?
So is everybody on the same page?
It's under, what's the, we're under the recreation.
Right.
Under recreation.
It's the bottom of that page. It says a big O.
Mm-hmm.
For, for one thing, on the existing paragraph, it says we favor, we favor ski area expansion is what's that is saying. The second one says we favor, we would rather have ski area expansion than developing a new one, which are two different policies, really.
The Planning Commission.
If there is going to be ski area expansion, it should be on one of the four ones is what the second part is saying.
Yeah, they were, they helped point out areas that needed to be more clearly stated, and this was one of them.
Any thoughts on that section? We've got about five more minutes here.
Is, is there any mention of Nordic areas?
We talked about that. There's, and we did talk about it in the Planning Commission, and. They talk about cross-country skiers and trails in general, not in its own Nordic section. But under the trails, we say, excuse me, we talk about non-motorized transportation alternatives such as trails for bicycle horses, pedestrians, cross-country skiers are encouraged. So is a trail link kind of reference versus a cross-country area?
But we do have a cross-country area within the county, so somehow I think we have to address that phenomenon.
We, we could add, under recreation, we could add a section on Nordic.
I mean, that, the area has improved trails, it has structures, it has restaurant. It's not, it's not quite an alpine area in terms of impacts, but it's more impactive than trails, and that somebody else might find an area that they want to expand into under the same model. So I think, I think you have to have, you have to pull it out.
I agree. I think a, a section that says ski areas alpine, ski areas Nordic, and, and there might be a slight language variation in the Nordic based on the lesser impact to a, a new area versus an expansion of an existing area.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I would include the 10th Mountain Trail System in, in that, I mean, the 10th Mountain, I don't know, what's the 10th Mountain? The Aspen Snowmass Cross Country Trail System, even though it's not a private enterprise, it still has.
But you're right, Steve.
Has the same impacts.
10th Mountain, it also is a system of trails and huts, which I think you should talk about, too. I mean, you should at least acknowledge sort of existing conditions of some sort.
Yeah. Good idea.
We've got about a minute left in this agenda item, timing-wise. I might make the recommendation that I do think this is, although we don't look at it all that much, it's kind of the foundation of a lot of our other stuff. I would suggest maybe doing a half-hour work session down the road to see some of these changes and amendments and diving back into it at that time. How does the board feel about that? I do feel we've got some time in our future agendas that we could make room for, for that sort of thing.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to do, I haven't been able to address the land exchange and a number of these things, so I'd like to do that at a future date.
Steve?
Also, there's sort of a general discussion about commercial development, on which would be on the land use patterns, page three of the thing, which we can't talk about that in a minute.
Yeah.
It's going to take a longer discussion.
That's why I say, I think there, I think there's some subjects we haven't touched on quite yet, and.
That's great.
That way we can kind of follow our agenda for today and, and get some of those revision ideas back in there.
It's really great to have you on the committee, though. We produce with you, thank you. And just real quickly, so you know, we, Ellen and I will be going to what we call the caucus roundtable. The representatives of each of the caucuses will be coming on Thursday to the Passat Library or the community center for us to begin discussions about what they feel is maybe needed as an update for the neighborhood master plans and what's relevant and not relevant in the existing plans. So we're going to begin that discussion.
Could you shoot me that invitation, please?
Sure.
It's Thursday, 10 o'clock at Passat Library.
Intended for the representatives of the caucuses to be able to go back to their caucus groups and have some discussion, so we hope to get a lot of participation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the G-RAMP plan request from RFTA. Mike? Ryan Paul, do you want to lead us off on, on a overview of this?
Yes. If you notice on my AIS, I just wrote that in June of 2013, the VOC approved amendments to Section 1132 of the Pickens County Code creating the G-RAMP program, and the board amended the original staff proposal to include this part of, this step in the process of bringing someone forward, the FCA forward, to meet with the VOCC, expressed their approach towards meeting the G-RAMP guidelines, and then the board was going to make a judgment on a percentage of fees that would be waived or if the entire fee would be waived or just how that approach would be. So they wanted to keep that in the board's hands, so that's why we're here today. Mike's here from RFTA. He's going to go ahead and make his case based on the information that's provided here. We kind of discussed this as our examples back in June when we were going through the G-RAMP program, and we spoke specifically to the BRT stations and the public service portion, what they do, and the public safety issue associated specifically to the BRT stations. So today, what we're presenting is just the BRT portion of the RFTA projects.
Okay.
Mike?
Well, I'm Mike Herms with RFTA, Director. So I guess I'm the first example here on the G-RAMP thing, the first application of this, so it's always interesting being first. So we are today asking for reimbursement on the rent fees that we paid at the BRT stations for the snow melt systems we put in.
How much was it?
It was about $205,000. I used $62 a square foot in my calculations, and the county does it just slightly different. They have a different math than I did, so.
Pretty close there.
So we're pretty close. And, you know, I tried to hit all the, the topics in the G-RAMP program there. We looked at a lot of alternatives to try to, you know, make these platforms as safe as we possibly could, and it's a real safety issue for us. This is our interface between all of our passengers getting on and on the bus and moving vehicles. People slipping and falling off the buses and getting run over, so it's a pretty big issue. It's something the FTA is very cognizant of, and in the industry, everybody's really working towards, you know, making these areas safer. In areas in, in places where snow is prevalent, like here in Utah, Idaho, you know, Montana, everywhere else, you know, it's a standard operating procedure to have a snow melt system to these platforms. So we looked at other ways. We, you know, we thought about GeoSource, GeoExchange. There was no way to make that work. We thought about, you know, hydronic systems, but that just required way too much infrastructure, that too expensive, and so we ended up settling with the electrical ice melt systems. We put it only in the critical areas where we needed to, where we had drip lines on the roofs or in that interface between the bus platform and the station where people are walking to and from, where they're running to catch the bus or trying to get to the bus. And one of the, you know, the theories behind all this BRT and everything is you want as many people, obviously, as to use the bus as possible, and the safer that you make them and secure you make them, the more people will reuse them, you know. You know, we have a very, very clientele, you know, from elderly to young people and things like that, and the safer they feel on the platform, the more people will track. So there were a lot of reasons why we went through this. Again, we tried to keep it as tight as we could and use the most efficient method that we could. And we have sensors in these things that, you know, measure air temperature and moisture, and that's what turns them on and off. As soon as it gets, you know, even close to warm enough, we'll flip the breaker and make sure they don't come on or things like that. So we've tried to minimize this, meet the kind of minimum requirements for this as efficiently as we could. And then as we helped develop it, you know, I've worked with Brian a lot on that G-RAMP program, and I appreciate everybody's hard work on that. That was a very interesting process for me personally, but we've tried to meet all the, you know, the spirit of that, and I believe we have. And so, you know, we're asking for the, these rent fees to be reimbursed and go back and building some more things at the stations and stuff like that.
Rob?
Michael?
On your, on your list of table one, you have some misspellings.
Apologize for that.
So, but on, on the buttermilk, you have just buttermilk up valley station. Isn't the buttermilk down valley station also?
That was the city of Aspen.
Oh, yeah, that's the city of Aspen.
And that's, that's snow melted without fees in the city of Aspen.
So that, on the other side of the 82, that's the city of Aspen because it's near their annexed house.
The annexed, the trust guy.
Huh, interesting. Okay.
Brush Creek is misspelled, huh?
Brush Creek and Passau is also.
You know, I pulled this out of something else I was doing, and I apologize. Spell check, should've been. Should've. I'm surprised Dan was also so surprised I got that.
So, these, the snow melt systems are in place now, correct?
Yes.
And they were put into place when, as the stations were developed?
As they were constructed, yeah. They're interlaced in concrete, you have to pour these things in.
I'm just trying to get the time, the timeline in terms of when you paid the mitigation, the rent funds, because now you're, it's just in terms of a policy as we go forward, because now you're asking for reimbursement over $200,000. And so those dollars, as, as I serve on core, and we approve budgets, right, so now we're going to be looking at a $200,000 shortfall.
Brian?
We foresaw that issue, so we kept these out of the rent purchase, it's in a bond right now.
Oh, okay.
Until we can resolve this, because we knew it would be a timeline from the time we got the G-RAMP program in place till we could get before the board. And as we went into the holiday season, it got very packed, the board's schedule got very packed, so this kept getting postponed because of context, with Mike not getting both of us here.
So these dollars never got accounted for with, by the city of Aspen, which holds the rent funds?
Correct.
So they're sort of set in a separate escrow account, so it's not going to impact the core budget or, okay, I understand.
And from our point of view, too, just a little more background, is, you know, the ice melt systems were kind of an add alternate to the stations, and we just didn't know where our budget was going to go until we had bids and things like that. And so we had it in the plans, the contractor vitted, and then when we saw how the rest of the BRT project went, we saw we had the money to, you know, go in and buy a couple of our add alternates, and so this was one of them. So it was an addition, kind of late in the game also, and then it just took us a while to work through the, you know, the way this could be done.
So then, it's just another follow-up, so if you, if you get the reimbursement of the $200,000 plus, would you anticipate using those for your ongoing energy-saving projects? Let's say at the Aspen Maintenance Facility or versus, I mean, where does that money go? Does it go back to the general fund, or does it go towards allocating for future energy-efficient projects?
No, where this particular money would have to go is to be back into the BRT project. We haven't closed out that grant yet, we have unallocated contingency yet that we're spending and some ongoing lawsuits and things like that. So since this was FTA money, forty, or 52% of this was FTA money, it'll go back into that, and we'll spend it on something related to the BRT project, and we have a list with the FTA that as contingency, you know, becomes available in the project, we'll do certain things, you know, enhancement of stations, and there were several other, we have a very long list of things, but plus parts, things like that.
New, fixing the service as a sidebar, fixing the entrances, the design of the entrances, where they're open to the weather right now?
Right, that could be one of them, that's on the list, and actually, we have a prototype of one up at Brush Creek, a windscreen that we put there, it just went up the other day, and I'm working on a task order to bring in somebody that understands how water flows a lot like, our air flows a lot like water, and it does things you don't, when you just put up a wall, does things you don't really anticipate sometimes, and so you have to be kind of thoughtful about how you do that, and so we're gonna bring somebody in to help us kind of look at that, figure out what's best. Also, each station is a little bit different in design and things like that, so that could be one of the things that goes into it, and it is on our list.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Steve?
I am curious if there, have there been any slippage or injuries on passengers this winter at other, at any bus stops in, in the Rafta area?
Yeah, we've had a few slip and fall injuries, I think there was one in Ruby Park, actually, and then, I don't know where they all exactly were, but major, let anybody run over, which is really good, and I'd like to think that this helped prevent that from happening. BRT's been wildly successful, more than been anticipated, and so these have really helped. There's a picture in here of, you know, a typical day where it was working, and provides a nice area to put on and off the bus.
And you have all, all the BRT stops all the way to Glenwood all have this same heating system installed?
Yes.
And different ones depending on how much ice forms or how much precipitation, and they would run at different rates, obviously, at the different places?
Right, 27th Street has a lot more ice melt in it because we have that long 88 ramp coming down, and the only way to make that thing safe for 24/7 is to do ice melt in that, and we have a path around the station, it's also a double site station. But that one runs less because it's down valley, we don't have quite the issues. So, you know, as you go up and down the valley, they run different amounts.
Yeah, the stops that I typically get on and off Rafta are not BRT stops, and there's very often is ice that either I'm on or that the bus is on, and I'm actually more concerned when the bus is approaching and slowing down the stop, I'm ready to jump out of the way just in case the bus slips, because oftentimes they're, you know, the, where the bus is, it's also icy, but that's kind of another issue. I, I agree with your, you know, kind of your reasoning on why you chose the system that you did, and I agree, it makes it much, much safer for the passengers at the BRT stops. I kind of wish it could be at all the bus stops, I guess.
Well, I think as we rebuild them, you know, and build new ones and design new ones, I think you'll see it, you know, if it's successful here, and, you know, things, you know, you gotta look at the, obviously, the costs versus benefits and all things, you know, and if it makes sense, we'll do it, because it saves, you know, it saves a lot of maintenance on our side and lifecycle cost of things, you know. You have to remove the snow one way or another, and you have to pay for that, you know, so you, you know, you gotta kind of look at those things. But the safety is huge, I mean, our RTB runs over a person or three a year, you know, because they slip off the platform and run all under a bus. Nothing like didn't happen. Everybody's really, it's a, it's a big thing throughout the industry, especially big with the FTA, and so whenever their money's involved, they really look at this, they encourage this whole analysis and this stuff, too.
Yeah, the one off-site mitigation thing that I don't think that you talked about, and I'd like to see Rafta at some point consider, would be a off-site, I call it a solar electric system, but some sort of a large scale, and it, I mean, maybe it would be at one of the bus facilities where that would be put in, or, or maybe it would be some off-site thing, but that would be an efficient way to have it in a good location, and obviously, you couldn't do it at each BRT stop, that would have been very inefficient and unproductive.
Well, we continue to look at that. Jason White with Rafta has very, you know, been champion that cause for a long time. I like it, too, because I end up with one site to maintain, and, you know, somewhere where the land is cheap, which is a huge deal, and, you know, trying to figure out what your cost is or all that. Clean Energy Collective, we've worked with them on and off on that, and we've been trying to figure out a way to finance it. They just came back to us about, about three weeks ago, and they've been working with the governor's energy office with these bonds that we've used before for energy projects, and they've figured out how to change the language and everything to make it work for those, I can't remember, QNEB bonds, Qualified Energy Efficiency Bonds. And so we think that might be a financing vehicle for Rafta, so we're looking at it once again, so. I like that same plan, too, that's what I'm pushing for, and I think it's the best way for us to go.
Okay, good.
So, for the board, the last paragraph in the code section, I think, is the pertinent thing, which is upon review and recommendation of the chief. Building official areas associated with these buildings or structures that are critical to pedestrian ingress, egress, or life safety may, at the discretion of the Board of County Commissioners, be exempt from rent payments for all or a portion of the area snow melted. Is really what we're looking at here in terms of where to go with the decision-making process, and some of the discussion that we had, and we put this code amendment into place, I'll just bring up, as I, as I recall it, is showing and offsetting based on its facility, and we, I think we clearly felt that Rafta, I felt that Rafta clearly offset carbon emissions as a whole, but then there was also the question of a partial or portion, and, and what, you know, what should we set as a policy for other government agencies in terms of, you know, the request? So I guess that's still up for our decision as a board. Steve?
Well, I think Rafta is in a unique position where you're, you're in the business of trying to get people out of their cars and off the road to, which has huge energy savings, the more people that ride the bus instead of driving, it just solves a whole lot of problems, and I don't know the exact, I mean, comparing how much electricity you're using to do the snow melting versus how many tons of carbon you've already, all the time are keeping from being burned, you're probably way in the plus column in terms of, you know, energy mitigation things already, and I could support granting this request from Rafta at this time, just based on your whole philosophy and your, your, your plans, what you have done, and what you're planning on doing in the future all are going in the right direction. So I could support the request.
George?
I think sort of the key language on that, on that paragraph, Rob, is that last bit, where be exempted from rent payments for all or portion of the area snow melted. Well, in this case, because it's such a public safety issue, I'm not sure how we could just divvy the refund back up for just a portion of the snow melt. So to answer your question, I think we, we should be looking at these requests on a case-by-case basis rather than having a general policy. So in this case, because it's very specific for the area where we're looking at snow melt at the stations, I would support this.
Michael?
Yeah, I also support it, it's clearly for the public safety issues, this is different from normal rent, which is when you're getting into jacuzzi outside at someone's house, it's not really based on public safety, that payment of rent. So I think, as Steve pointed out, the offset of vehicle miles for mass transit miles is huge for Rafta, and they should be exempt from paying these rent fees.
And for the general public, I'll just kind of state out, too, what was, what was offered up in the letter from Rafta, which is that they estimate that, based on the vehicle trips that are reduced, that 696,000 gallons of gasoline annually are reduced, creating a net reduction of 6,811 tons of CO2 admissions. So there was some calculations done as to what Rafta does as a benefit to reducing some of the car trips up and down the valley. I'm in favor of moving forward with, with 100% at this point, and I do agree with George that it won't necessarily be every case that we see 100% reduction of those rent fees based on the public safety issues, the, the measurements that are given in, in reduction of carbon for, for what's being offset by the overall program and that sort. So my next question may be for John Ely, which is how do we proceed with a budgetary change or a, or a financial thing? Is this just administrative, is this just an approval that we do in a work session, or do we actually need a vote on this in terms of how this coded, how this code is, this new code is set up? It says, "At the discretion of the board," in the code, in the last paragraph of the code, but does it need an application and a regular meeting and notice or, or a consent action item, or, I'm not sure, being the first one?
Yeah, that's a good question. That's what we're.
I mean, here we are in a work session, kind of discussing this, but it's not really a regular meeting, and it really is a $200,000 decision that the board is making here regarding making an exemption to our code policy.
It's really just the execution of the adopted policy that's in place already, and the request is, is in place as expressed through Rafta, Mike here right now. The question for me is, is the board constituted to give direction? It's not a, it's not an implication to internal finances, but rather, can the board give direction at this meeting? We're not in a special meeting right now, to my knowledge, so probably to keep this as clean as, as we should, to just schedule it as a consent item for Wednesday. Certainly Rafta's heard, likes to hear the discussion, knows the, what the direction of the board is going to be, but this would allow the item to be heard in a public meeting, and the off-chance that someone wants to contribute something to the, to the dialogue, that can occur.
I would agree with that, moving forward, so can we schedule this, John, on our, on our next consent action, regular meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So I should bring an ordinance?
I don't think it'd be an ordinance, so it'd just be a one reading resolution.
Resolution. This would be March. March 12.
You, you mentioned the fuel savings that Rafta outlined.
Yeah.
But really, what you need to have, it seems to me, is you need to have the fuel that you save, but also the fuel that's consumed by the board, by these, by these heated, that's where your savings is. I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna consume energy by melting ice, but you're also saving energy, you gotta show that one doesn't exceed the other. Because then it is a problem.
And that'll always be kind of the nebulous calculation, because you never know how much it's gonna snow, so you can.
Yeah, but I mean, but you can, you can.
You can project, project to the best of your abilities, there are people who can do it.
Yeah, I think Rafta's a unique example because it is, they do do a tremendous amount of carbon savings based on their entire program, but I agree with you, Michael, and that was part of our conversation when we enacted G-RAMP, was to have a calculation of this side versus this side. And I would not only add, it's not just the snow melt, but you're saying, you're getting rid of X number of rides up and down the valley because people are riding the bus, which is this much gas, but you're also using gas to do that, so that's part of the weight of this side. You also have buildings, you know, you also have your transportation here as an administrator, so, but, well, okay, so that adds into the gas of the bus, but I think our intention when we did this was for applicants, people to come before us and give a, here's with the program and here's without the program, all the elements and all the elements. So as we learn about this going forward, if another application, you know, if another, you know, person comes before us. you know, person comes before us for an exemption, I think that's what we'd want to see. So, yeah, Michael.
So Aspen, did Aspen go through the same process, or they just immediately dismissed it as?
They treated it somewhat like a right-of-way issue and just said that they would not govern for the less stuff that was in the right-of-way. So they totally didn't get into this conversation, they just waived the fees associated with...
But they have an energy mitigation program, too, don't they? So they, they wouldn't even address it. Now, it's in CDOT's right-of-way, is that right?
Technically, yes, but it is, there is a parcel of land that has a structure on it, and that's why we governed it. We didn't address the trail leading up to it, though, that's in the right-of-way, and we stayed out of the trail work. And they did actually snowmelt the trail leading up to the ones at the ABC.
At ABC, yeah, that was the underpass and those ramps built up to the stations were built by the city. And their building official has the ability to waive those fees on life safety issues. So I think that's the way they went with those.
City? I'm getting...
It was right-of-way.
Right-of-way?
And we left that separate, the right-of-way work separated from the structure.
Right, I apologize.
So you dealt with the structure itself?
Yes, and the pavement that was adjacent to the structure. That's where the county got involved, the building department got involved.
Okay. I apologize, I confused that with the projects we have going on. I have like 11 projects in design and development right now.
Steve?
I have one question just about the, about the system itself, the electric heating system. On the chart, towards the end of your stuff, it says it has a fairer lifecycle cost, which is actually the lowest compared to all the things. And I'm wondering, what is the life expectancy of the, of the heating system and what, when it needs replacing at some point in the future, what's involved in that?
The manufacturer says it has a 20-year lifecycle, you know, estimated, and generally they underestimate those things. So it'll probably last, you know, that 20- or 25-year range, and then you have to remove and replace concrete to do that, because it's poured into the concrete itself, so.
Okay, so sometime after, no, none of us are on the board anymore, you'll be replacing it and maybe come back and talk to the future.
That's about the lifecycle, the structures and everything else, you know, and by then, you know, you'll be looking at what are you going to do in the future and that kind of thing.
That's actually the estimated lifecycle of the snow melt with our rent program. That's how they calculate protracting that, how much they pay upfront for 20 years of use. So it's interesting what else unfolds along.
So when it's replaced, is that you begin a whole new cycle of rent fees?
Apparently not, but I think that's something that I was hoping to address when we were ready at the rent program.
So if you remove and replace, you have to pay rent fees a second time?
Right now, there's an exchange for that, but we were looking at maybe doing a 20-year lifecycle, because that's how the math is done on how to calculate the fees. So if something's older than 20 years, technically, they've lived out its lifecycle in what they paid in the core program.
So the rent would at least want to know that you're possibly putting in a more efficient system in the future rather than relying on a 20-year-old technology?
We did look at some of those policies for our replacement update to our rent program. Great, well, we've got direction to bring this back in a regular meeting as a consent item action. We weren't sure how long that was going to take with the discussion of the board, but we do have some filler topics to take up the second half hour of this hour.
So, Mike, you just took a $200,000 bus ride?
Yeah, who?
Actually, just the opposite.
And Brian was very helpful on all of this. He's been very patient in, you know, answering questions. Brian publicly brought us help on this thing. He's really done a great job on this, went out of his way, didn't have to do all this work.
Great, thank you. So one of the items that John Peacock wanted to bring before us in open discussion, which we'll take a little discussion of the board, is some conversation about our upcoming retreat. And I think he's going to jump into that now.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. I'm handing around a little bit of information for you to start our discussion. First is some more information about the facilitator that we're intending to use, and then a skeleton of the agenda, and I'd like to have a little bit more discussion about that. But I believe I had mentioned to the board that we were talking to Carl New. Carl's been consulting local governments since 1976. He's been around Colorado for quite a while. He's out of Lakewood. He served as an elected official in the past and has also taught at a couple universities, the University of Arizona as well as University of Colorado, both in their schools of public Came out of MIT and Harvard, has an MBA from Harvard, but has really focused his whole career on public sector governance and specializes in working with city councils and boards of commissioners, particularly in areas of governance and strategic leadership and kind of the coaching board dynamics and those sorts of things. And so I thought he'd be a good match for our retreat this year. If you turn to what is the third page of the, and I did not number these, but it's the, the skeleton of the retreat agenda, I want to chat with you guys about this a little bit. First, just to confirm the location and time, we have this scheduled for all-day April 1st and the morning of April 2nd. We have reserved the Limelight Hotel, so we would be using the meeting room, same meeting room we used last year with a pretty similar structure in that regard. Talking about doing something a little bit different, we have typically used the mornings to go through a plus delta exercise and working agreements discussion.
What's a plus delta exercise?
Plus delta is what went well and what were challenges in the previous year. This year, I'm proposing that we spend that morning time a little bit differently. Carl works with a lot of boards on, as he's termed it, the art and skills of highly effective governing bodies and how, how do you have a productive meeting? And I think we do a good job of that here, but it's always good for us to spend a little bit of time, particularly with somebody who's had a lot of experience and time working with various boards, to talk about what is that art as well as that procedural element of having really effective meetings. Most of what you guys do is around this table, and he has a lot of tools around how, how do you have an effective discussion? How do you move an item forward for decision effectively to make it as transparent to the public as possible, as well as having a meaningful conversation and dialogue around the table to really unpack issues and build consensus? Or not, know when you're not going to on a particular item. He uses a similar tool to one that we've used in the past. I think we've used the Myers-Briggs kind of inventory in the past. He has a, I almost forgot what it's called now, it's SDI, which I can't remember what it stands for, but it's a similar tool to Myers-Briggs, which is really a skills and style inventory that helps us understand how we, as individuals and as a group, might approach our, our time together and having discussions and dialogue to help us better communicate and such. So that is the proposal, basically, for the morning session. So it'd be a little bit different than what we've done in the past, but I think in a pretty similar scope in terms of talking about what are some things that we can be doing to just keep ourselves as a high-performing governing body. The afternoon, we're proposing to do a similar thing to what we did last year, which is we had a community panel. The board had discussed and provided recommendations on a number of people to come in, and at that time, we had a pretty unstructured panel discussion based on, you know, just talking about what each of the panelists saw as being potentially major impacts to the county and things that we should be thinking about five or 10 years out. That was, I think, a pretty successful discussion last year, and so we're proposing to do the same thing. One of the things that we might want to talk about doing differently is, do we want to focus on some specific topic areas that we'd like feedback on versus a more general discussion like we did last year? So if the board still wants to follow this kind of agenda, I'm hoping to get input or some discussion from you all about potential speakers, as well as if there are specific topics that we may want those, those speakers to address. So that's the proposal for the afternoon on day one, is to do that same kind of panel. The afternoon would also, I'd anticipate, have section leaders involved in the, being around the table to hear that community dialogue. I think that's valuable for all of us to hear on both the staff and policymaker side. We then propose that the morning of the second day, once we've had time to process the information from the first day, really focus on either reaffirming or resetting our priorities going forward. So some updating on the strategic initiatives, what did we hear about our short and long-term challenges? What are our priorities going forward? Are they still in the, you know, areas that we've been focusing on? Do we need to make some, some changes? So that we're either reaffirming the direction we're headed, or you guys are able to say, you know, we, based on what we heard, you know, whether it be through our citizen attitude surveys or from our panelists or in our discussions with each other, do we need to change directions or reemphasize something else? And that would be how we'd spend the morning of the second day. At least, that's the proposal at this point. So that was kind of long-winded in terms of an introduction, but what I was hoping to do is get some feedback about whether we're headed the right direction with the structure of the agenda, and if so, to start to get some feedback on potential speakers and topics.
George?
Yeah, I like the general direction of this. I think it's, it's what a strategic retreat should be, some long-term visioning. So I think this is good, we have some skills development, and then we have some broader discussion. So it's a good combination. And I also see, when we talk about the open forum, that there's, for me, there's a linkage to the next day with strategic initiatives. And so I would suggest that we look at some of our strategic initiatives that we've identified the last couple of years and bring in those people that are, in the community that are actively involved in those issues. Some of them are new players, which would be very good as well, but perhaps use that as, as an idea. So for example, if we look at health with the, our new initiative, we've got a new executive director at the hospital. So that's, that's an idea in terms of a direction. I would also, we've got a new district ranger for the, for the Forest Service. And certainly, when we look at public lands and partnerships that we're doing with them and broadband, you know, I would, I would bring in Forest Service on that. Housing is another initiative. I'm not sure who we would pick for a housing person for the community that would provide some good discussion, but is public, our public influence, that round that we, I think we're making headway, but I'm not sure, again, who would be the right person for that. Special events, we talked about, and maybe there's a way to incorporate that idea with community nonprofits as a, as part of our economic diversity for community. So that's, I would throw that out as ideas.
Other thoughts, Steve?
Two, two areas where I see, you know, that we might want to get, have a community expert on, and one would be just renewable energy kind of theme, and also Colorado water plan kind of theme, where we stand in Picken County in relation to all the Colorado River issues and the Colorado Water Plan and potential, more potential diversions from Picken County to the east slope.
Yeah, I think we're getting our plate too full.
No, I agree. I think, I think focusing on, you know, one or two of these with, in the forum with a community panel is probably the direction to go rather than focusing on everything. The next day, with the strategic planning initiatives, I think what we've done in the past is we've kind of looked at what we've brought up in future, in previous retreats, where we've gone, what we've accomplished in those, and whether or not they still are the top five list, or whether or not we take one off and add something new and that sort of stuff. And some of that discussion might come from the, the first retreat. I really like the broad subject of, of health, both physical and mental. I think we've had a gap in that physical aspect with the, the mental health that is needed in our community. And that's just me speaking up, some of my opinions. The other things that were mentioned were housing, broadband with partnerships with the Forest Service, Steve brought up water and energy aspects. So I don't know how or what topics one might want to narrow down to in terms of that second half-day, second session, which is the second part of the first day.
Another way to look at this is, what size of a panel do we want, given sort of a time constraint? I forget how many we had last year.
Yeah, we're trying to keep, I think we ended up with five. We were trying to keep it to five to seven panelists. I think our afternoon was full with, with the five, and what we had asked for was about 10 or 15 minutes of comments from each panelist to kind of say, so what do you see coming our way? What are your priorities from whatever segment of the community you're serving for the, you know, for the next five to 10 years? And what do you see as factors impacting that? And we brought our discussion from there. So we left it pretty wide open last year, and we focused on what was the diversity of the speakers. And so we could take a similar approach, where we could say, you know, what are the segments of the community that, that we need to hear from? Our thought was maybe we do, you know, do, well, I guess our question was, do we want to focus that a little bit more this year into either kind of the areas that we have been focusing on, you know, the healthcare and the housing and, you know, how we work with our federal and state partners and those sorts of things? Maybe that kind of specific question, what I'm hearing in the discussion, maybe that too quickly piles up. We have too many big issues that we could take an afternoon on any one of them, really. And, Michael, I think that may be where you were going as far as focusing on issue versus maybe bringing...
Yeah, I don't want to go off, I want to follow along with the community, with the results of the community panel, really, and discuss those issues that the community panel brings up, rather than create a whole new series of issues that may or may not be relating to the community panel. Because we're asking them to be there for their insights, their, their expert opinion or at least their community opinion, and, and then to go off on other exercises. at least their community opinion, and then to go off on other exercises, which I just don't think is going to be productive. And I think the sort of free-ranging ability of the community to do that, and our response to it should be a fairly nimble and active discussion, not set to particular topics.
I saw, one of the things that I remember from last year that I don't think was as successful is, I didn't think we had as good of interaction amongst, not only the board and the panel members, but the panel members amongst themselves to provide us with more of a broader perspective of community needs. And so, we may need to have you or whoever help facilitate that discussion, because it got, if I recall, it was more of a presentation, and there were a couple of questions and answers, but we didn't have the, we were missing that dynamics of having those people there with us.
No, I think you're right. Maybe one way to combine what we're, because we were kind of going down the road of, how do we get some comment on our strategic initiatives and such? Maybe it'd be interesting to just tell the panel members, these are some of the new initiatives, this is what we've been focusing on, you know, as priorities, as new things, as an organization. Where does this fit in with, you know, where your organizations are at? Are these the right things for us to be focused on? And that can maybe start a dialogue around healthcare and broadband and what have you, where they can say, here's why this is or isn't important to us, because that's kind of what you guys need to hear. And I think from there, you naturally get to that free-ranging discussion that you're talking about, Michael, just say, well, gosh, this isn't really important to us, but this over here really is, and you guys are missing on this entirely. Because that's really the dialogue that we want to have. And so maybe if we make it specific to, here's kind of what we're focused on, this is what we're doing, and share that with the panelists ahead of time, and ask them to comment on, how does your organization view this? We can ask the Forest Service, we can ask the hospital, or whoever we bring. Is this a priority for you? Should the county be focusing on this? And what are we missing, you know, from your perspective and where you come from? Would that be a good dialogue?
As long as it's not, as long as we don't solicit a critique of our strategic initiatives, per se, that these are initiatives, and they may or may not fit into what you're doing, we don't need a critique of them, but what are your initiatives, and are there any similar ones, or have you taken a different path? That's what I'd like to see.
How would we, or would we utilize the results of the survey?
Well, those are going to be, you guys are going to get the survey results presented ahead of the retreat. So we should, we're actually open to have a draft report later this week, and a final report to present to you, let's say, mid-March. We're going to have them coming out to present. And so that, for me, I would consider that background data for us to be looking at and using when we prioritize, are we focused on the right things? You know, I don't know what that survey information's going to say just yet, but one of the things we did do, as you recall, we kind of broke it down by our strategic plan areas, so it gives us some way of relating it back to that. So, we'll be having that information, I'd consider that background information, as well as some demographics that we're going to collect for the board. So it sounds like, structure of the agenda, everyone agrees is pretty good. We'll obviously be putting more detail around this. It sounds like, right now, we definitely, it sounds like there is consensus around getting some speakers around, certainly, healthcare and broadband and housing. Are there institutional or community leaders that you'd want us to reach out to? Maybe outside of those specific partnerships to comment on these things? We probably have about three people with that consensus that I've heard. I'm guessing we're going to reach out to Dan Bonk, we'll reach out to one of our mental health providers, potentially, to talk about what's going on there.
Rob? I think we should have the ski company involved again. I think we should have somebody from the real estate. Somebody who's really good at it. I mean, apparently Andrew Earnerman is really good.
He's got a good presentation in terms of a lot of statistics, and demographics, and things like that.
Maybe we don't want that, but maybe we want a sort of a, I don't know what we want, but some, because if real estate is indeed a billion-dollar-plus industry, or the exchange of monies is up to over a billion dollars a year, and we don't recognize it in some fashion, then we're missing out, it seems to me, on a substantial part of the community. So we need, I think we need a representative of the real estate industry.
Stay Aspen Snowmass, potential to weigh in on? I mean, they usually have all the figures on, you know, I think of Bill Tomsich offhand. He knows the airport, he knows the bookings, he knows, you know, where the tourist industry is going.
Yeah, but, you know, I like Bill, and I think he's good at all those things you're discussing, but I'd like somebody who can talk about it in very general terms, about the hospitality industry in general terms, rather than, we have this amount of bookings in March, we have this amount. He does a good job at ACRE doing that. But I need somebody, I'd like somebody who can, who's not only looking at those particular figures, but looking at a, say, a five- or 10-year period of what the hospitality, what the recreation industry in Picken County is...
I agree.
... to them of some sort, just in general terms, not in specific terms. And that could include somebody from the ski company, but also somebody from hotels, or lodging, or related, or somebody like that. I don't know.
Maybe the way you do this is, this is sort of, each of us sort of give you some names, and sort of their areas of expertise and influence, and then we could sort of, you could sort of meld them together and bring them back to us.
And some of it's going to be a scheduling, some of the winnowing is going to occur just by scheduling, so...
Yeah, I mean, you know, for instance, if you look at the newspaper, you can look at the articles, but actually what conveys more information is the ads. And so if you look, particularly if you look at the real estate ads, those convey an enormous amount of information and trends and desires of the community, it seems to me, that's why they're there. And I'd like somebody to tell me what that is. What are those? What are you trying to do? What's going on? You know, we take it for granted to see real estate ads, but this is a unique situation. You don't go to many small towns and have a five-page glossy insert of real estate that none is below $5 million.
I think it also speaks to our land use policies, the value of our open space programs. So I think that's a good idea.
Well, why don't I, if the board members would, you know, submit a couple of thoughts, and we'll try and, what I will look for is, where do we have the most crossover initially? And that will probably be the first place for me to go. Again, I think a panel of getting much beyond five to seven people is too much for us to really manage effectively and have that kind of dialogue. And in addition to the few names, if there are other topics that you guys see, you know, we have other big things going on outside of our strategic initiatives, whether it be our, you know, ongoing efforts for, you know, to continue our planning at the airport, that we've been spending a lot of time talking about the impacts of, and regulations around recreational and medical marijuana. There's other topics that we've been pursuing that maybe as a board, you guys want to receive some comment on it, it'd be good to hear that, too. Okay, well, we'll keep moving forward with planning and report back to you guys as we get the agenda more settled. And we will be having you take another self-assessment to prep for that morning session, similar to a Myers-Briggs.
It's a simpler, I've taken it before.
It's a simpler one, yeah. It's like two pages.
Via email type thing, or like we did before?
It may be on paper, actually. I just got a draft of the assessment today, so... Does anybody else have anything short they'd like to add before we break for lunch? No? So I guess we'll take a little early, five minutes early for lunch break. We'll be back here at 1:00 for a special meeting, public hearing on some licenses. Welcome back, everybody. We just got back from our lunch break. Today is Tuesday, March 4, 2014. It is Mardi Gras. It is also our Picken County Board of County Commissioners' work session, and in the, our afternoon session is going to start off with a special meeting and public hearing regarding some retail marijuana licenses that are coming before the board, now that we've passed the retail marijuana regulations. This will be the first set of licenses before us, so we will probably take a little extra time to make sure that we go through the procedure properly. But I will start by taking a motion to go into a special meeting.
Sumud, second?
We have a first and a second, Michael and Steve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're in our special meeting, and we have three applications before us. The first one on our agenda is an application submitted by Cooper Mason Ventures.
My name's Jeanette Jones, City County Clerk, and my entourage, who are here today, Brian Paul, including our chief, our chief attorney, inspector Lance Clark, Assistant Community Counsel, and John Ely, our county attorney. And we are going on the consensus of staff and the applicant. We are going, asking for a continuance of the third item on your agenda, which is a cultivation license for silver, or excuse me, stash. And I hear, and sorry, Shauna, Shauna are here, too, for the first application. Their first, second application is for the retail store that has been applied for by Stash. They have two applications. The third one is for their cultivation facility on River, or River Road, and we're asking for a continuance of that item, that application, to give them more time to work with Brian and the attorney and John Peacock to resolve their issues.
Shall we handle the continuance first, to just get it out of the way?
That's fine.
Okay. So the third application, which is an application submitted by Shauna and Garrett Patrick, doing business as Stash for a retail marijuana cultivation facility, I'm calling that item number three on our agenda, if you number them off, one, two, three. And I will accept a motion for a continuance.
Need a date certain?
To March 12, please.
I'll make a motion to continue to March 12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this item may do so at this point.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
March 12th is a regular DOCC meeting.
Correct. Typically, we would do these on a regular meeting. We're hitting that timeline where we could first issue licenses to those who already held a medical license, which is why we did this. So seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board and close the public comment on this item. And any discussion among the board? Steve?
Is this because of the building permit things that haven't been completed yet at this point? Is that the reason for asking?
Yes.
For the continuation?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comment from the board? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor for the continuance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous, Lee. Did you want to, Jeanette, go to the application by Silver Peak? Or which one did you want to handle?
Silver Peak, yes.
Okay. So now we'll move to the application submitted by Cooper Mason Ventures LLC.
I don't know if the applicant is here or not, or if they're presenting yet.
Please. Just watch it.
Great timing. Okay.
We just hold the, we just brought to order the application by Cooper Mason Ventures. And again, this is our first application on this, so we will probably have some procedural questions as well. And I know, Jeanette, you had passed out a document that kind of goes through the requirements of the licensing.
Okay.
But we'll handle this just as we would handle a public hearing. We'll have you do a presentation of the application, we'll ask questions of you, or other staff members at that time, and then we'll have the applicant make the presentation afterwards. We'll ask questions of the applicant, we'll open the public hearing at that point, take public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and hopefully a decision, so...
Okay. And I may defer right to its legal questions. I'll probably defer to it generally, if it's legal questions or applicants, I'll probably just defer to one or four at that time. The application, I looked with the applicant, with Jordan's representative, maybe two or three times to go through the requirements of the application. And what you have before you is what I looked at with the application itself. The property, well, starts out with the application, number one is the application. The proper owner authorization, we have that. The name and address disclosure, I'm going to make this a little bit brief, because you have it in front of you, but what you have on this page here is either addressed in the application that you have before you, or they are attached to the application. And maybe I'll stop there for just a minute, and if you have any questions...
Does the board have any questions regarding the application that's been submitted and its requirements to the guidelines?
Well, I'll have some questions, but I think I'm waiting to hear from Brian, because I guess maybe academic to some extent.
Yeah, this page is pretty straightforward. The applicants have addressed it, and these items in the application, and like I said in my memo, are attached to the application. So that is all in sync and been reviewed, and they're good to go, as far as that, those components go. There were several outstanding issues associated with permits, various issues. And I met with Brian Paul, and John Ely, and John Peacock yesterday, and Brian related that the electrical permits have been issued that are on the list. I think it's Attachment 10 of your packet is Brian's list of violations. I'll give you a minute. I'll give you a minute.
It's the very last page in the packet.
Everybody there?
Yep.
Okay. So the side porch issue, the side porch roof and mechanical enclosure, which was added without a permit or inspection, has been eliminated. There's a, with all of that, there was a porch built and a setback area, and the applicant is scheduling a hearing before the Board of Adjustment, Board of Adjustment, Adjustment, which I just found out has been scheduled for April 1st to request a variance for that setback issue. There was a septic issue that maybe Brian can speak to, and I will hand this out, that we just received this morning.
So as a, kind of a further update to that list, there's permits and inspections required. If you want to walk through it, if we skip the first one, because that's the most outstanding issues we'll talk about last. Eight mini-split AC systems, they pulled permits for, had complete inspections for now, and have cleared that issue up. The four air filtration ventilation systems have been properly permitted and inspected and are completed. The generator issue, it has been inspected, and all issues regarding the generator have been completed. The service was a non-issue. We found that it really was, a 600 amp service inside the panel box. The side porch was removed. And then getting back to the front porch issue, that was, because it was built without any permits originally, it was already, and kind of an existing issue when Jordan moved in, but it was never really resolved. So there's still this variance that has to be dealt with for the allowance to have that enclosure around that porch area. The porch seemed to be pre-existing until Jordan actually did his remodel interior, but we can't find any record in the building department of any permits pulled out. So that will be the one remaining issue. The other, when you get down to the septic systems, that one, we had the full use permit, and Carla Ossberg, who used to work for the county, came out under her new business and inspected it and found that there were some issues, but they were resolved that afternoon. Jordan got right on board with clearing out any issues. There's still some outstanding information for quantities of the nitrates that are going into the system, and the possibility of addressing that through separation and haul-off or some other method to deal with that, in case there's excessive fertilizer going into a septic system. That's kind of the one main outstanding issue with that. And we won't have that full report from Carla until later on, so that'll still be a remaining issue as we discuss this.
So my question is, how do we deal with remaining issues in moving forward with the licensing at this point?
The discussion that we had yesterday, that, you know, just to give the board some background, typically, if we're doing, for example, on a liquor license, we wouldn't necessarily be reissuing kind of a building inspection process. However, because of the unique nature of this business and the fact that facilities are being converted into, you know, sometimes a higher intensity use with the cultivation of marijuana, we have been initiating, having the building department also referral the fire departments go out prior to issuing a license, primarily to identify safety and life, life safety kind of issues that would exist at, at the facilities. In, in the case of this license, what we identified were items, the items that we identified needed to be resolved from the life safety perspective, particularly the electric and septic, have largely been addressed or are largely in process of being addressed. The remaining issue, the setback issue, is actually a pre-existing issue, not necessarily associated with the use of the facility, and in our opinion, didn't present a life safety issue. We do have agreement to move forward with resolving those issues with the applicant. So in this case, we felt it was appropriate that the facility had met the requirements from a life safety perspective, and therefore had met at least what our intent was in having the referrals to the building department, as well as fire departments, addressed for the purpose of licensing. So based on that, it's staff's recommendation that the facility is substantially in compliance, and is in, and is in compliance with all issues related to life safety. And so we didn't see any reason to deny the license based on, on the remaining issues being addressed.
Michael?
Brian, do you agree with that?
That's a tough question. I don't feel like there is a risk to life or public safety involved with what's happening. Now, currently, everything's being caught in a containment tank in the septic system. They turned the pump off that would send it to the effluent field. So until we have test results and can verify that there's a problem there, or if there is a problem, as far as quantities, and what we're, how we have to handle that, I think they have a safe solution while that remedy is happening.
So they're using the septic tank as a holding tank? Is that what you're saying? And then pumping it?
The pre-tank, yes, the pre-tank.
And then they would have a pump truck come and remove?
There's actually been accommodations made. They actually have T-fitting in the valve that would isolate anything that comes from the fertilization process into a separate area, so they could collect that now if we asked them to. They could start separating that out and collecting that and hauling it off or treating it however we see fit. And environmental health is working directly with them on how best to handle that.
So do we normally test for nitrates in, in a septic system?
This is such an unusual thing. No, I don't think we would have ever looked at quality or quantity of what was going into a septic.
So, so what gives rise to that inspection?
Just the concern, because there was a lot of injection happening in intentional, especially during the relief-in period where they put a whole lot of nitrogen-based fertilizer into the system, just kind of, kind of raised a flag, as I was out there wondering if there was, if there was anything detrimental. And it was just kind of a what-if question that I posed to the septic engineer and to environmental health, to see if we had an issue or a non-issue there in the first place.
And so environmental health said what?
They want to know the quantities, too.
So it's a, it's a question of inquiry rather than regulation?
Currently, yes. It depends on quantities. If it gets to a quantity level that is a concern, then they may have raised new concerns.
What's the effect of having too much nitrates in a septic system?
It depends. I would have to, I'd have to have an expert actually give me information on that. They are very close to the water here. They're really close to the coastal river, which means anything that's being leached out would possibly make it into the river.
How close are they?
Close as fifty feet? Probably about a hundred, fifty, or so. Can I just make one comment? Is that, I, independent? No?
If it's, I would say let's wait until your presentation and just write down, because normally what we do is we have the, the staff give a presentation, questions of the staff, and you can include, you can include that sort of comment into, into your presentation, just to keep it on the, on the agenda for that. Steve, questions of staff?
Brian, in your memo, you use the acronym AIS, right at the very last. I hope this helps with your, what does AIS stand for?
My Agenda Item Summary. That was actually, being part of her, I asked, that was just.
That's what we call the cover memos, Steve, that, that go onto your packets.
Exactly. Yeah, the Agenda Item Summary. I was, I was writing this to include in Jeanette's packet, so I said, I hope this helps with me, and I asked. Is there an Agenda Item Summary?
I didn't know it had to do with a marijuana application or something, so.
This was, this email that we put in the packet was just an internal email that I had sent to Jeanette, just giving her a rundown of my site visit, because as a referral, I was asked to, I would just do the inspection.
Okay. Thank you.
Brian, you said that the April 1st, the applicant will go before the Board of Adjustments for variance setback?
Jeanette said that, but yes, that's what their schedule is.
Joanna Schaffner called me today and asked about the noticing through that.
So do you, do you expect any issues or problems with that, or to, if for some reason that the Board of Adjustment did not approve that variance, what would that mean?
It would mean possibly they'd have to remove that porch, would be the only implication, really. And I don't, I know that would adjust Jordan's way of doing business a little bit, but it wouldn't hinder his whole operation. And talking to Joanna and Lance, to be able to speak more to that, is that she didn't feel like there was going to be any hesitation with that, getting that approved, and that should go forward without problem. And we do have other ways of addressing it. If that doesn't go through, we'll just, we can work on having it removed, or whatever we have to do to make that work. So there are other ways to get past that particular item. I don't see that as something that would stop the licenses.
Further questions for staff at this time?
One more, I'm sorry. This was public notice. Do we, I didn't notice in the packet, do we have any comments from any adjoining neighbors, or any comments at all?
I didn't receive them.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Steve?
For the medical marijuana greenhouse operation that has been on the site, have there been any, any communication from neighbors or the public about the operation of that, or any problems that have been associated with that?
Any?
Lance, do you know?
No, we've received no complaints, letter of support.
Yeah. John? That would actually come to, to me as the licensing authority, and we haven't had any complaints relative to this license.
Okay. Any other questions of staff this time? Jordan Lewis, if you'd like to give a presentation of anything in addition to, to the record?
Sure. No, I just want to clarify a few points, and thank you for consideration today. Regarding the setback issues, the whole site is constrained. It's within a hundred feet. There's a, it's close to the river, so there's a hundred-foot setback from, where there's the hundred-year floodplain setback, and there's a hundred feet from the highway. Those overlap, so there's no, technically no area of this property that, that is legally billable without some exemption. So the porch is just a small piece on the, you know, within the, the whole house is in the same setback, so. It's, and it was pre-existing, the roof and the concrete floor, and I, all I did was add some sidewalls. It's still not conditioned space. And regarding the effluent and the waste runoff, it was not a requirement when I first got licensed to have anything checked out at all. On my own accord, I did two things, because I was very concerned about this, and I understand the sensitivity in the community to this issue. I installed T-valves, collection valves, off, off the runoff, so at any time I could collect it, if that was the course I needed to take. And I also called Tim Petz, the septic engineer, to come in and analyze what we were doing. And he, what he told me at the time was, the quantities of your runoff are so minimal that the septic system is more than capable of handling them. So I left it at that. And I'm assuming that we're going to get a similar response. I mean, or, I don't know, but I'm assuming, but if not, it's, the valves are, as Brian said, the valves are already there. And so I just wanted to point out that I did that on my own accord several years ago, without anybody telling me to do that, so.
Any questions for the applicant at this time? George?
Yeah, Jordan, in your application, you briefly talked about some of the issues relating to lighting, security. Can you expand on those? Because we had a fairly good information of packet that came before us from a previous applicant, from a professor down at CU, who talked a lot about lighting issues and impacts of water and air filtering systems and things like that.
Well, I think what, if you came for a visit, I think what you'd see is a gold standard facility in many regards. We, all the lights are individually vented. There's no, there's fresh airflow, the way it's designed is that they're not daisy chained, so each light has its own fresh air in and fresh air out, and it doesn't even pass to a separate light. There is a temperature and humidity monitor in each room that will automatically kill the lights, electricity, if the temperature exceeds a certain, a certain threshold. It also sends an email and text alert to whomever we have on that alert. So I don't think you're going to find a more sophisticated system as far as dealing with heat from lights. We also installed carbon scrubbers on all the, the, one thing to keep in mind, this is a controlled environment system, so there is technically no exchange of outside air with inside air. All the air just runs through the lights, and then the, the room, the air within the room is recirculated, and we, we add the necessary carbon dioxide to that air to allow the plants to photosynthesize. But just to be extraordinarily cautious, I put four extraordinarily large charcoal scrubbers just on the air coming through the lights, which doesn't even mix with the air from the rooms. So there is effectively no odor coming at all out of the house at all. There's no light coming out of the house at all. The neighbors have submitted a letter of support, actually, to Lance, which she has on record. In fact, they called me last night to wish me luck, and I'm not sure what more I can say.
So, so you, this, this facility has, has been used for your medical marijuana, so now switching over to recreational, you haven't really had to make any changes in terms of lighting, air filtering, or security?
No. It's tech, the only change is that the plant will have a tag on it saying it's your retail purchase.
No, thank you.
Questions for the applicant? Steve?
Jordan, are you going to continue the medical marijuana grow operation in the same location?
Yes, that is the plan.
And do you have to? I don't know the regulations from the state, but do you, do you have to keep those plants separate or identify separately, or how do you do that?
It's a virtual separation, Steve, so the tags, the RFD tags, the radio frequency ID tags, get placed around the base of the plant, and they're assigned to be either medical or retail. But you can move the plant wherever you want, throughout the house. The state, the state has a system in place that they feel makes that a redundancy, that's not necessary to physically separate them.
Okay. What's your water supply for watering the plants?
It's well-water.
Well-water? Have, did you go, do any change, any water rights change or anything when you started your medical marijuana operation?
Well, prior to acquiring this property, I researched water rights, so I extensively and discussed with Lance, and it was determined that since it had a well that was for domestic irrigation, that the county was okay with that.
Okay.
It's irrigation dropped to an acre, and that brought to you.
Yeah, there, I had a conversation this morning, this is more for the board information, but it was from Bill Blakesley, who's our water commissioner from, from this area. And he was telling me that the Division of Water Resources is considering any, any greenhouse or grow operation, no matter what they grow, to be a commercial operation, and that whether they use well-water or surface water or whatever, that going by the water law, they should have a change of use through the water court to a commercial use. So we, I presume this one would be for domestic use for the house, because it was a house.
It was initially licensed as a home use occupation, so that's why that conclusion was reached, I believe.
Okay.
I, I think there's this gray area that we're all trying to figure out, how these things should be classified. This is, I mean, it certainly has aspects of commercial use, but it also is a, it's a 1600 square foot house. So it's, I mean, it's a house.
So I think that's an issue that may, you might have to deal with, but I think we as a board have to, have to come to grips with what, what might or might not be required by the Division of Water Resources.
I understand.
It might be a condition that you have to comply with, perhaps, just to let you know.
Question?
Michael? This is not for Jordan, this is for Lance.
Yep.
Lance, is, what's the zoning on this property?
Lance, is, what's the zoning on this property?
It's AR-10 or RS-20, I'm sorry, actually. It's one of our major rural districts.
Uh huh. And so, and this is occurring in the residence, is that?
That's true. It's actually, there's, there's no one living there, but it's a modular unit that was once a house. So this would be a, we have interpreted it to be an agricultural use permitted by this zone.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Steve?
Are there next door neighbors in this neighborhood and how, how close are they? Do you have any, have you had any communications with them personally?
Yeah, I got a call from, from the next door neighbor last night to wish me luck and, and he was asking me how this was going to change things there. And I just explained that it wasn't going to change anything and I asked him once again, is everything okay on your end? He said, yeah, absolutely. Just wish you the best of luck tomorrow. And on the other side of the property, it's, it's all national forest. So we don't have, we only have one adjacent neighbor. And like I said, Lance has a, a letter, a file of support from them, so.
Lance, are you saying you don't have a letter of?
Well, I think maybe it went to John Becock. I, I don't have a, a letter to maybe gen-.
I haven't received that yet.
I gave it to him about two years ago.
Oh, two years ago.
From the, from the previous licensing application then is where that letter was from?
Yeah, I'm not sure what prone to that though.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time?
All right. Follow up on with, with Lance on Michael's question. So Lance, if someone on AR-10 or RS-20, they wanted to put up a warehouse type of structure to do some sort of industrial use, would that be allowed?
No, industrial. We're, we're treating marijuana grow sites as agricultural until the board makes, until and unless the board makes some other interpretation. Does he mean somebody could have a welding shop? No. Somebody could manufacture auto parts? No. But yes, somebody could build a barn for growing marijuana.
Okay, I, I guess maybe to John Ely. I, I don't remember the board making a, a decision that we're looking at grow sites as an agricultural function.
The issue was discussed several times at the work sessions. There was no direction to go forward to change essentially what the staff has been doing. The explanation was put forward that when, when staff deals with a use that is not particularly called out in the zoning regulation, then what is done is to look at what would be an analogous use. And in this case, that's what staff has done. And so the conclusion is, is that cultivation of marijuana was the same as cultivation of anything else, and therefore staff interpreted it as an agricultural use, which is, is not out of line with the same exercise that other planning or zoning officials have had to do in other jurisdictions. Now, that decision is always available for review by the B O C C. The board can determine that it's, it should be classified as something else. Or the board can simply direct that a code amendment be processed such that marijuana use or cultivation or sale or whatever else, not use, but cultivation or sale or infusion of medical marijuana products should be classified independently so that it's not analyzed as analogous use to something else that's particularly covered, but as, is its own use. But that direction didn't come forward, so the status is what the status is. It's a staff determination that it's agricultural use.
And I think we've had this discussion as well, that we consider, or do we consider that any ag use is also a commercial use?
It's been discussed by the board in that although you, you typically would look at say, a cattle ranch as an agricultural operation, it definitely involves a commercial aspect in that there is a product that is raised and then sold. So it's a, it's, it was a discussion that the board had concerning the, you know, the various classifications and interpretations of activities on property consistent with zoning regulation.
So for the purpose of classifying this property for tax purposes?
This property is classified as, by the assessor currently as residential.
As residential. And it could be, be classified at either as ag or as commercial?
And the ability to classify as agricultural is contingent upon the use. Typically speaking, the way the Division of Property Taxation looks at cultivation within side of a structure is to try to determine whether or not the cultivation takes place actually on the ground. If you're dealing with a hoop structure where there is cultivation on the ground and simply a shelter for control of, say, exposure to sunlight or humidity or something like that to, to a lesser degree than a full-on enclosure of a, like a structure such as this, then the classification for agricultural, as agriculture for property taxation purposes is available. If however the cultivation is taking place in a, an elevated grow box or within a fully enclosed area like this structure, then typically speaking, that the agricultural classification is not available.
And then would it become a commercial classification?
Eh, potentially.
Yeah, I thought, isn't the state of Colorado sort of struggling with this issue right now, trying to determine whether they're going to classify greenhouses as cultivation sites, not as ag, but as commercial?
I don't know if I'd say they're struggling with it because what I just laid out is what exists now. I suppose it's always available for consideration as to whether or not to change it. I don't know if marijuana is the driver particularly, as just larger greenhouses might be. In other words, if you're constructing a larger greenhouse that is a completely enclosed structure and that's something that takes advantage of, of the soil underneath the building, so to speak, whether you're growing tomatoes or marijuana or whatever, it's, it's, it's a topic for discussion. So the rules may change and it may change through interpretation by the division or it may change through legislation. But right now at least, that's where the division has come to rest. If cultivation is actually in the ground, then the classification of agricultural or agriculture is available to the property owner. If the cultivation is not in the ground, but in a bed of some sort or within the structure, then the ag classification is not available.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
There is a bill currently in the Colorado Legislature dealing with this topic and it's said to just codify what is already the existing condition. It's Senate Bill 43 and it has to do with the assessment of greenhouses and other agricultural properties. And it said that greenhouses and grow operations would be assessed or are already assessed at 29% of, for valuation purposes. So this law doesn't change anything, but it's just codifying what already exists.
Michael?
Well, in that case, it's, it's not, it's not, what you're talking about is a commercial assessment, not a residential assessment. This is under a residential assessment, is that right?
I believe so.
Yeah. So then how do you factor in the 800 amp service, the lights, the, what's the assessment on that?
You mean as personal property or as?
Well, isn't it an improvement to the property and isn't that assessed?
If there are fixtures to the property, then the property might increase evaluation and that would be picked up by the assessor's office.
Through the permitting process, that information's shared with the assessor's office. And so they can make an adjustment on value as appropriate. But it doesn't necessarily determine use and, and this is, you know, one of the areas I, I think that is, is being wrestled with. Again, a different process from the licensing procedure that, that we're talking about here. But certainly how greenhouses are, are treated and then how grow operations are treated. I don't think we've had many situations where a residence has been converted to some type of, of growing facility. I think a greenhouse has typically been assessed at a commercial rate, according to past discussions I've had with Tom Isaac, our assessor. I think that's consistent with what, Steve, you were just saying. I don't know that right now we've had that discussion about a situation like what's going on on this property.
I mean, because the assessment on the valuation of this property is $165,000 for the improvements. So if you factor in 800 amp service and the various lights and the humidity control and charcoal filters and so forth and so on, I'm sure you get beyond $165,000.
Well, and because the permits had not been issued prior to us going through this inspection through the licensing process, the assessor didn't have that information.
So, so the medical marijuana process didn't pick that up?
No. The, this has been evolving as we, we started doing this on medical more recently that, and we drove it into the retail process. But this was one of our, one of our first, if not our first license issued, I believe, was this, this facility. And at that time, we were really relying just on the stated license being issued.
Other questions for the applicant or staff at this time? Steve?
I guess this would be for you, John. Can, on a marijuana application, can we approve it with conditions just like we would a land use?
Yes.
Decision? So that, that would be conditioned on certain things happening?
Yes.
Since, and this, this type of application has to be renewed every year?
That's right.
So would that, do you think the conditional thing would be, that something would have to be completed within a year before the neck, the renewal of the application in a year, or would it be a shorter timeframe or what do you think?
Well, I guess it depends on what you're thinking about, what your concern is. To have a, a license issued on, with a condition that something be completed within a year doesn't seem to be too much of a fact, simply because the license is, is good for a year anyway.
If there had to be a water rights application, it could take a year for that to go through the?
I can't imagine a water rights application going through in anything less than a year. But I do know that this county does not administer water rights.
We don't have control of the water court.
Application, we don't have control of it? Nor do we administer the state law in regards to water rights at any level.
And something more like rectifying any remaining building permit issues could be a shorter timeframe because that's something we have control over?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Additional questions for the applicant or staff at this time? I think at this time I'll open the public hearing on this item. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item may do so at this time by simply raising their hand. Yes, sir, if you'd state your name for the, the record and, and speak to your comment.
My name is Bill Blakesley. Colorado Division of Water Resources views any grow operation inside a building to be a commercial operation. And I would urge the county to take that into consideration when approving these land use applications because it does have implications on water use and the state's water rules are very specific relative to this issue. And I will repeat again, any grow operation inside of a building is considered commercial use by the state's Division of Water Resources.
Anything else, sir?
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to make a public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time and bring it back to the board. George?
So John, switching a classification, that's really not our purview, is the assessor's purview to do that?
Property tax classification? That's correct. The B O C C may possibly review it if there is an appeal that's filed in the board's capacity as the, the county board equalization. But assessment, valuation, and assessment classification for tax purposes is handled through the assessor's office.
Someone from the assessor's office should have been sitting in on this here.
Michael?
So John, we, we have a confusion of, we have a residence that has been converted to a grow operation that is using residential well that is supposedly, has to be commercially designated. There's a profusion of sort of terms here that, that are, seem to be, if not mutually exclusive, then contradictory. How do we proceed with, with that confusion? I mean, under what guidelines now should we go?
Well, I assume you're referring particularly to water issues or?
Well, not particularly, that's just one factor. So Mr. Blakesley has just said that it's considered a commercial. We view it as agricultural. The house is residential. So, so I'm, I'm having trouble negotiating through all those various aspects of it. And I, I, I would have a hard time explaining to any one person exactly. It's like we have various people examining the feet of an elephant, the tail of an elephant, all with different descriptions. How do we go with this?
Well, at least as far as the use being consistent with zoning regulation, quite frankly, I would defer to our own planning and zoning staff through the Community Development Office and their analysis that the use be interpreted consistent with an agricultural use is logical and consistent with other jurisdictions. And so to say at least at that level, then the use is consistent with the county's zoning ordinance would be a logical determination. So the original structure or the existing structure was originally built not as an agricultural structure or to service an agricultural use, but to, to be a residence. And I would assume was occupied as such for some period of time until the medical marijuana license was issued a while ago now and has been consistently used for a medical marijuana grow facility since that time. So the residential structure still exists. The residential use has been discontinued and has been replaced with the miracle, medical marijuana and now potentially retail marijuana grow facility, which, as I said, is consistent with the zoning, which allows for both on this particular property and, and accepting the analysis through Community Development that, that both being consistent with the zoning that's on the property, both can occur. The commercial element regarding water rights, the water rights associated with this property isn't so much a decreed water right as a permitted well. And the well permit, I would assume has a, a certain series of qualifications listed. And the qualifications, I would assume have, given the representations that Mr. Lewis has made, that the, the well was initially permitted probably as a residential well or potentially a domestic well, which a domestic well, which would have allowed, under its original permitting, a certain amount of consumption of water associated with a residential use on the property, as well as a certain amount of consumption of water associated with irrigation around the improvements. Mr. Blakesley has informed us that the use of greenhouse cultivation or enclosed structure cultivation, whether it's a greenhouse or something else, is interpreted as a commercial event by the, by the, by the division. And therefore, the state will regulate its permit consistent with those limitations. The, I have not seen personally the well permit associated with the property. And I know that if a well in the county is being used inconsistent with its permit, that the action to enforce is available to, through the state of Colorado and not through the county. We simply just don't have the power to enforce well permits, nor do we have the power to issue them. Nor do we have the power to police or regulate any other type of water right. We are, in those contexts, just like any other entity or individual, and we can avail ourselves of water court. And we can confer with representatives of the Division of Water Resources, but that's about it. And the statement by Bill, by Mr. Blakesley, I would take to be basically consistent with what we try to do, which is to attempt to coordinate with other regulatory agencies so that we're not doing one thing with the left hand. It couldn't be done over here by somebody else, and so that we're all consistently on the same page. At this point in time, I mean, I don't know how the well permit on this particular property would be enforced by the division. And I suppose it's a little bit independent of what we're doing here. But to Steve's comment as to whether or not we can issue a license with conditions, we certainly can. And one of the conditions this is about is, you know, for example, I think that what Steve was mentioning is that conformance with the building codes be satisfied as enumerated by, by Brian within some set period of time. And that would certainly be inside of, say, a year. That would be relatively immediate. And if you wanted to have a different condition, that this license is valid as long as the consumption of water is consistent with or in compliance with permits or rules and regulations from the State Division of Water Resources, that would be a legitimate condition to put on, such that if there was a determination by the division that the water consumption was not consistent with a water right or with a well permit, then the license would no longer be of effect. So that's, that's a suggestion for how to deal with it so we can move forward on the licensing determination and still try to address or accommodate the concerns that we've heard, which seem to revolve around building permit issues and water consumption.
Michael? Yeah?
Brian, what building code was used under this? Was it the residential code or was it a commercial code?
When this was originally done, it was known as a live-work situation. And that is contained in the I B C, but it's relative to the I R C as far as if that was really what was happening.
So could you tell us what the I B C is and the I R C is?
I B C is the International Building Code, which deals with commercial structures. The I R C is the International Residential Code, which deals with residential structures. So, I think as it was originally permitted, originally possibly planned out and developed, it could have worked under that live-work situation and still be considered part residence and part an accessory occupation inside that residence, kind of like a small daycare in the home or similar operation of that nature. I think that's how Tony Fassaro originally permitted the situation. But the trend and definitely the way the Front Range is dealing with this is treating all of these operations as more of a commercial operation. Even a greenhouse is out of the I B C, out of the International Building Code, and is a commercial structure. Because there is no category for a greenhouse in the I R C, it would come out of my building code. So there's been already a little bit of confusion between where the zoning is looking at these and the way the building code. And I had to categorize them as occupancies in the building code.
So you've, you've done the inspection under the I B C of this structure?
I've been working with the guys that these are more closely related to a commercial operation. There's employees, there's processes going on, there's product creation and packaging and things way beyond just growing a plant in a structure. So I've been looking at it more fitting into a category, as the Front Range does, as more of a factory-type occupancy.
Well, 800 amp service would be more than a typical residence, right?
Well, it's really only six, so we did clarify that. But, and we have some residences here that are in the 800 to 1200 amp, so we can't just go by that. But probably the, if you watched his meter turn, he's probably using quite a bit more energy than your average resident.
Additional questions at this time? Discussion among the board? Michael?
Well, you know, it's interesting, we've raved more questions than we can answer here, it seems to me. But John's explanation of proceeding under our own regulations for the time being with certain conditions seems to me to be the path to take now. I think, given that, given that the water might be a commercial use, that the building code is under commercial use, that we might look at this in a different way than we're looking at it now, in the future, say, next year. But at this point, I think that the applicants met all our standards and meets those standards. So I think we should go ahead and approve the license.
Steve? Will you accept the motion?
I will. I move to approve the application submitted by Cooper Mason Ventures LLC, doing business as Silver Peak Apothecary for retail marijuana cultivation facility, with the conditions that any outstanding problems with the septic system and building, building code is rectified, and that the applicant file an application with the state water court to bring the water rights up to the standards that are required by the State Division of Water Resources.
Did you want to put a timeframe on this?
I don't know how I would accept suggestions from the board on timeframe.
Brian, what do you think for a timeframe regarding the aspect of the building code to satisfy those, those measures in your mind?
Most of that is administrative change in use we could do. If we wanted to change it to a commercial use, we could do just with the permit that's already announced to make those remedies to the structure. So I don't see that being a lengthy situation. He still has to get his approval for that porch, so that's 30 days out already that we're looking. So I would say you'd have to look at maybe a 16 to 90-day timeframe to resolve if this is kind of outstanding.
I would suggest a 90-day time period for the outstanding items presented by Brian regarding the building code and the Board of Justors.
And in terms of the water rights, I would say the application be made within 90 days to the state. We have no control over how long that process takes once the application to the water court is made.
And rather, I would suggest, instead of saying an application, just because I'm not quite sure what processes the division might feel is appropriate, why don't we state it something to aligns like the applicant coordinate with the Division of Water Resources and the engineer's office to take whatever steps this might be determined to be necessary by that office, consistent with state law. And that way, you know, there's no, there's not a particular directed action that's required, but it's available to, to the division to determine what, you know, they want to do consistent with water consumption.
They might say nothing.
Might, whatever they might say.
Okay.
George, do you have a comment on that?
No, I have a question. I didn't know whether it got second or not.
No, we have a, we have a motion with, and we've got a second discussion.
Yeah. Lance, back, back to this question of the zoning. If this were to be determined that currently residential A R 10, how, what size is a property, the lot?
It's small.
Not conforming, so it's an acre or two acres?
Right.
So it's a non-conforming A R 10 property?
It's one acre.
Okay. If we look at this as a commercial use based on the International Building Code that Brian is using, based on the state water regs that they're using, based on the fact that it's going to generate employees and have an ongoing sort of process distribution going on, would we have to rezone this to commercial?
Yes.
And are there any other commercial properties along this area that would suggest that it could, it might be rezoned as commercial?
No. When we, if I could just give a little background on that, when we first had medical marijuana come forward and we had discussions with the board as to how we were going to deal from a zoning administration standpoint, we had these discussions and said, well, and though it's not in the licensing per se, because the medical marijuana licensing regulations were fairly brief, but we said, what staff will do, because this is growing a crop, is we're going to determine grow sites to be agricultural. We're going to determine that dispensaries, what they were called with medical marijuana, are akin to drugstores or liquor stores. And drugstores or liquor stores are allowed in the B2 and B1 zone districts, primarily the A B C. And that's the only place we allow dispensaries. And we determined that induced products, the making of edibles, would be treated like a bakery or a creamery or something, a bottling factory, which also could go in the A B C. And we talked about that, and that was the consensus of the board, and we moved off in that direction. And that's the direction we've been going ever since. And when we wrote the retail marijuana regulations, if you'll recall, we had some brief discussions about that. Does the board want to continue calling this agriculture? And we didn't get any feedback that we wanted to change it to something else. So that's the direction we've gone.
Yeah. Yeah, I, we were, as Michael said earlier, there were more questions that have come up during that process than today than we have answers. And I think we need to, at some point, continue that discussion in terms of how we view grow sites. For me, I view them that they should be in industrial, commercial zone areas. I think it'll be interesting if and when the state decides to uphold how they're going to value cultivation sites for property tax purposes. It sounds like they're going, they're leaning more towards commercial versus ag. So it is extremely confusing. And as Jordan said, there are a lot of gray areas. I think we all knew this going in. I think that's why I was trying to present my point of view that because of that, these gray areas, that we should look at a temporary ban and unincorporated Picken County. I would like to see the, at least suggest to the assessor's office that they take a look and see how they may want to assess this next year, whenever they do the next cycle. But for me, this, this is clearly a commercial operation. I mean, it's in a residential house, I understand that, but it's a commercial operation for all the reasons that have been listed earlier. And so unless we want to rezone this property to commercial, I can't, I can't support this.
I have a question for Johnny Lee. Is it, is there any, I guess logic is the right word, is there any path of viewing this commercial from the sense of the water use, viewing it commercial from the sense of tax use, but viewing it as agriculture from the sense of our land use, in terms of it being an allowable use on this piece of property?
Well...
Or does that create a conundrum?
Not necessarily. However, and that's, you know, why some communities, I think, have probably elected to look at marijuana as a use unto itself rather than trying to...
Yeah.
Put the odd-shaped peg into a different-shaped hole, perhaps. But how the use is determined from a water perspective is a determination that the state will make, independent of individual counties or local jurisdictions, municipalities, et cetera. The methodology elected by the Division of Property Taxation will be likewise a decision made by a state agency that will be uniformly applied throughout the state. And that will be done independent of us. What we have control over ultimately is zoning classification and how to classify each use within a zoning designation. And we can, we can do that. However, you know, we can look at this as its, as its own use and try to go through the zoning regulation and attribute the use as allowable under a particular set of zoning districts, or come up with an overlay such that it's available in certain areas of the county, or any, any number of treatments, really. At the current time, the only thing that's available to us within the zoning regulation is to look at it as a analogous use to something, to determine where it's allowed or where it's prohibited, et cetera. Where we are now is where we are. Until the board directs that that change, we're sort of in this, in the logic of the system that we have.
And it seems to me like that would be a logical step moving forward to look at the cultivation of marijuana as a use unto itself and write into our land use code where we feel that fits in, using a, potentially a combination of the, how commercial use is treated and a combination of how agricultural use is treated, and have a mix of those two in the, in potentially a new code section of, or a new use section of cultivation of retailer medical marijuana. In the meantime, I feel that it's, it's appropriate to move forward with looking at it in this gray area of an acceptable use because it is close to the, the use of agricultural Further discussion? We have a first and a second on the, on the table. Steve?
A lot of the discussion we're having has to do with commercial versus agriculture. And I still view a greenhouse operation as an agricultural operation. This zoning of this land is, does allow for greenhouse operation and agricultural operations to be there. Whether or not somebody's living in the house should be more of a matter for the assessor's office, I think. Should probably look at this and maybe revalue it at the agricultural, the greenhouse and other agricultural property rate, which happens to be the same rate as commercial rate for valuation purposes. But, but it still is, the underlying zoning allows this type of operation. And then two other factors come into play in my approving this. It has been a, a medical marijuana operation, and there have been no problems associated with that being there. And also, the application is for, you know, a one-year time period, it has to be renewed. It has to be renewed every year. So it gives the applicant a chance to, you know, bring the property up to the standards. Also would give us a chance in the next year, if we decide to change things, we have a year, maybe next year, we would look at, at it differently. That's why we'll go ahead and approve it now.
George?
I, I guess I'll just say, I, I don't know how we can classify this as an ag operation, as a grow site, when it's in a residential house. It doesn't make sense to me. So that's all I'll say.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of this application with the adjustments that we've made, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Commissioners Child, Oswell, Osley, and Itner approve and Newman opposes. Yes.
I have a question, it is to John, do these conditions of approval go on the license?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Technical question, is, is the license effective today?
It's effective with the vote.
Thank you very much.
The next application is an application submitted by the business stash for a retail marijuana store license. And again, I think you heard the procedure. We'll have our staff do a presentation, questions, applicant do a presentation, questions, open comment by the public, discussion by the board. Go, go ahead, whoever's, Jeanette?
This is an application for a retail marijuana store license. Samantha Garrett and Shawna Patrick. And the same as before. I met with Shawna and Garrett, and we went over their application very extensively. And I'd like to thank them, and I'm sure as the commissioners go through, their application, it's very detailed, and there's a lot of hard work and good information put in there. And the only outstanding issue with this application is, and again, th- these are the same applicants that were continuing the cultivation license. This is simply just the re, maybe not simply, wholly simply, the retail marijuana store license at this juncture. And you'll be looking at the cultivation license hopefully on the 12th, if we can work it and get the issues resolved. And the only outstanding issue here was an inspection by Brian Paul, which I think he conducted. And I'll let him speak to that inspection.
And at that walkthrough, I found no outstanding building issues or consistent with the rest of the building and consistent with the direction he wants to go with the operation. So have you found any problems with that, or?
Questions, staff, George?
Maybe to John again. So for a retail establishment, do they, are they still required to grow 70% of their product until October 1st? Is that when that law changes?
Yes.
And so then, Garrett, when you have a chance in your presentation, you can answer, how will you be supplying your store? You haven't got a cultivation license yet to be able to provide at least 70% of your product.
Right.
Other questions for staff at this time? Seeing none. Garrett, if you'd like to?
Yeah, George, I'll just answer your question. To provide 70% of our product, hopefully will become approved on, on the 12th as well for our cultivation facility. And we provide all of our products through our cultivation facility. And right now, we're allowed to have up to nine pounds at the store. So that's what we'll be having up there and taking up there in order to transfer to the retail side to last us. Hopefully, you know, we have a bunch of edibles as well to last us as long as, you know, until this meeting, until our cultivation facility gets approved. And once our cultivation facility becomes approved, then we'll be able to transfer more product from our facility up, up to our store, which is in about eight days. So I'm pretty sure we'll have enough product to last us at least eight days.
I, I'll ask a follow-up question.
Sure.
Is 75% that you have to supply?
Yes, sir.
This is 70? Is 70% that you have to supply yourself? Is that done on an annual basis?
I'm pretty sure 70% of the product in the store that you have to have for sale, like in the store, has to be yours.
Okay.
So like 70% of the, you know, all the buds has to be ours. 30% we can purchase from another wholesaler, another store.
So you won't be able to sell until you can actually produce something?
Well, we've already produced, so you're able to transfer stuff over to your retail store as well.
Oh, so you're able to transfer the medical?
Right.
Production to, so you can do a, you said one time? Is that, are those state laws?
One time to reallocate the inventory.
Okay.
So that, and that's what?
So you're reallocating stuff that you've grown under your medical cultivation license to become retail product at this point? However, you, you know, you have the stuff marked so that it's classified for the state, and then it becomes retail.
Right.
And you can immediately sell that as soon as this license is issued?
Correct. It was the same way with Dr. Gardens down in Carbondale. They were only allowed to transfer their store over at first. So the first two weeks, they just had to sell what they had there at the store. And they, I do believe they sold out because it took a long time for them to get their cultivation facility approved. But they did that as well, so.
I understand.
Well, they sold out quickly because it was during the X Games.
Yeah, that was one reason, yeah.
Other, would you like to continue, anything else you'd like to add to your application?
Just gonna let you guys know that I'll represent the community very well, and, you know, I'm always doing the right thing and following all the rules, so, you know.
So again, this was public notice, and we didn't have any comments, either pro or con, from any of the joining businesses?
Sign, sign was in the window when Brian and I inspected, and I received nothing.
Questions to the applicant? Steve?
Oh, do you anticipate there will be a different, difference in the amount of traffic between having a, be a medical marijuana store versus a?
I hope so.
I think there will be more, there will be more traffic.
Yes, sir.
Do you have, what sort of parking facilities do you have?
There's a, you know, parking lot in front of us, and there's also street parking. It's pretty crowded, I would say, during the week. On the weekends, it's completely empty around there, which is not a problem. You know, we just anticipate a lot of the tourists, you know, taking buses, taxis. A lot of the locals, you know, ride their bikes, live around there, or take buses as well. So, you know, parking hadn't been really a big issue. It's more of an issue for employees than it has been for anybody coming to the store so far. And if it becomes an issue, I've talked to my landlord about that. We'll, we'll address that as it comes, basically.
There is no street parking allowed now.
There's not?
No.
Everybody does, I just, yeah. All right, there's a few parks.
We'll probably legalize that too.
And again, regarding that question, I'm assuming that, that looking at the application, this is a commercial space. It's zoned for car traffic that's already anticipated to be there. So it's, it's really kind of been built under those, under those expectations to some extent.
Yeah, I think the thing that we all know is the Aspen Area Business Center is under parked
Yeah.
in, throughout.
In general.
Yes.
Other, George?
Yeah, one of the things we talked about, Garrett, I don't know if you followed when we were discussing our rules and regulations, was for the proprietor of a retail outlet to come up with some informational guidelines and be accessible to provide knowledgeable information to, to your clients.
Sure.
How, how are you going to address that if you're looking at opening this up?
We've addressed that by training our employees a lot. Our new employees, we've had several hours of training sessions with them. Our employees, we're always going to have a main manager on site that's there just helping the new patients, informing of them, the products and everything. They've been working with us for several years now, each of them have, and are very knowledgeable about all our products. So, and I, I'll be there personally as well, as long as it takes until, you know, the, everything is settled.
If I may speak also, I've kind of been in the background of this application because I hold a professional job in the community. I can register nurse. And so I've been very involved, especially with the edibles. We know nurses administer drugs, we know dosages, we know milligrams. We know recommendations for our patients. And if you look at the letter that our, one of our patients, Shelley submitted, she supports that fact. Our employees are very knowledgeable, and I've had a big part of educating our staff in regards to those edibles. And we have flyers made up already that we'll be handing out to our customers with every sale, based on your discussion on your regulations with, you know, where you're allowed to use it. You know, you're not allowed to give it to children. The recommended dose is 10 milligrams, and you should wait at least 30 minutes before you consider taking another dose. You can't use it on public lands. You can't have an open container in your car. You can't divert it outside of the state of Colorado. So we have those little flyers made up. They will be handed to every customer with their receipt. We also have signs hung up. We will have them made that they'll be hung up in our store just reminding our customers again, you know, to be careful and be cautious, especially for our tourists.
And just kind of respect the community. I feel like our medical patients have really done that and respect the community as far as marijuana consumption's concerned. But, you know, people from out of state might be a little different. So we definitely want to, you know, just do our part.
Shawna, is it Shawna? Could you identify yourself?
My name's Shawna Patrick.
Okay, thank you. George?
So are you looking at any additional security? I, I saw a little blurb from a Denver station where they're actually hiring security guards who
Sure.
as are transferring dollars from the cash register to the vault, and they're armed guards.
Right, I, you know, I don't foresee us having that issue, such as Denver. In our community, it's definitely, the crime is not as bad as it is in Denver. So I have friends that have grows, some people that I work with that I know that have been broken into in Denver and been robbed and stuff like that. And that's just a situation up here that, you know, we're definitely concerned about, but I don't think it's as big as a concern. We are going to have security measures, we have a bunch of employees, we, we're going to ID everybody, we have an ID machine, all that stuff, so.
We count as safe, we don't anticipate in keeping our cash on site. We anticipate keeping it in a safe deposit box at the bank. So we're also, we've kind of organized our store so that our flow will flow seamlessly, and we hope to not have those long lines. I mean, of course, we love, love long lines, but we want to keep things flowing. So there aren't people hanging around and waiting around and stocking the place and maybe looking for those breaches. But we have followed all the state regulations. We have security alarms on all of our windows. We have commercial locks on our doors. We have a large safe that we store our dry herbs in overnight, so. And we will continue to monitor this situation. And if we feel like we need to do that, we absolutely will hire a security guard or implement some additional measures. We are very involved every single second of the day with the business and watching the store. That's one of the great things about having the security cameras is, no matter where we're at, we can pull it up on our phone or on our computer. And if we're not at the store, one of us is usually always watching the store to see what's happening there. So we're very diligent about keeping it safe.
Yeah, that's one of our main concerns, especially for our employees and stuff.
All right, thank you.
Further questions for the applicant?
Can I bring up one concern?
Yeah, go ahead.
One thing I noticed, because it's in an existing place and it's on an upper level, there's no accessible access. Do you have a way to make accommodations for someone who may have special needs to be?
You know, we haven't, that's an issue that we've run into the whole time. We've tried to move downstairs with our landlords, you know, because of that. You know, especially with medical patients, we've had people in wheelchairs and, you know, people that I have a hard time just making up the stairs. So, you know, we've helped people up the stairs, we've carried people up the stairs, and that's, that's kind of what we've been dealing with. And most of those people unfortunately opt to go other places.
Well, we've tried many times to ask our landlord to relocate to the downstairs location, but they, they won't let us do that at the time. We hope to in the future.
Yeah.
Further questions? I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anybody wishing to make a comment on this application, they may do so at this time. Yes?
Dan, Bill Blaisley. And Garrett, my question is for you.
Yes, sir.
Have you applied to Colorado, or?
You need to check.
Yeah, the que, the question should really come to us as a public comment, not really a question back and forth. So if you want to make a, a comment in the, and have some questions in it, we can then ask the applicant that. Thank you.
Yeah, my question is to the board. I would like to question and ask if he has applied to his store and will commit to continue his rural operation.
And you can certainly ask that question. We're not, look at you, we've continued
Right, right, sure.
the commercial grow application license until the 12th.
Exactly, I have a hard time with this.
So when you've come back before us on the 12th,
Right.
you, you're coming back before us for a grow operation.
Right, correct.
And as you listened in to the last, that we made, we made a, a condition of the last application that they follow up with the, the Department of Water Resources of Colorado
Right.
to determine the needs of how that water needs to be classified. So I would say, you don't need to necessarily answer that now, but that question will most likely come up
Sure, no problem.
when you come back to us on the 12th.
I spoke with Bill before, and, yeah, well, I was actually, I got a card from him at our place. I guess he left it yesterday is what I'm assuming.
Yeah.
But I was planning on contacting him this afternoon and just discussing everything with him.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Oh, I'm sorry, we're in public comment. Anybody else wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the board. Any comments or discussion from the board, or I'll entertain a motion?
I'm, I'm okay with okaying this application. You know, it's another case of the medical marijuana operation's been in the same location, and we haven't had, I mean, I haven't, maybe there, I don't know whether there's been any new break-ins, but there hasn't been.
Yes, sir.
Publicity about it, and I don't see that there's any problems that have been associated with medical marijuana thing. And I think we owe it to the applicant to, you know, give it a shot on doing the retail marijuana thing in the same location in place of the, of the medical marijuana one.
Any other comments, or I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a retail marijuana store license for, for the applicant.
Second? We have a first and a second. Any discussion? George?
I'm going to surprise the, the press. I'm going to support this because in this case, you've got a retail store in an area that's owned commercial. And I think that's appropriate, and you're following the rules and regulations.
I'd like to make a comment. And I meant to make this comment when Jordan was here too, but I'll shoot him an email and tell him. The applications that are before us are trailblazers in a new industry. And, you know, you've obviously already been doing the medical side of things. Your business, and I know what it's like to be a business owner, your business is invested in the, in the safety and the security of this industry moving forward in a positive way. I can only encourage you to be the leader of this community as more applications come before us. Be involved with the school programs, be involved with the community programs, be involved with training your staff properly, be involved with getting good information out to the community. And go above and beyond, because as we look at these applications, you know, they're going to be like there is in everything. They, you know, good apples and bad apples, and hopefully the bad apples aren't all that bad, and, and, you know, we fix those problems. So, so be a good leader in this community by doing
For sure.
by going above and beyond.
I will, for sure.
Any other discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes with the unanimous vote. Thank you.
Great, thank you guys, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. If you're in a special meeting, please-
Yes, I'd like a motion to adjourn the special meeting. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Why don't we take three minutes, come back at, just a quick bathroom break, at 2:32. That's okay.
That's what digital talks are good for.
We're back. It's Tuesday, March 4th, MontiGra Day. We're here for our work session, the Board of County Commissioners. Our next agenda item is the Colorado Child Care Assistance Program and income eligibility levels regarding that. And Nan Sandin is here to present.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Nan Sandin, Health and Services Director, and I have a couple of guests with me. Amy Coyle works for Kids First, and she's our new family engagement coordinator to help us enroll people in CCAP, Child Care Assistance Program. And Shirley Ritter is the Executive Director of Kids First, Child Care Resource and Information. That's what we used to call it in the old days. So I invited them to be here today because, as you all know, there are implications when we change eligibility for CCAP to Kids First. And Shirley was out of town, so I didn't get a chance to really include her thoughts in the memo, but I think we're mostly aligned as staff and wanted to represent that mostly by having them here today. So Child Care, the Colorado Child Care Assistance Program is a program that provides financial assistance for childcare to low-income families that are working, searching for, or enrolled in training or employment programs, or are enrolled in the Colorado Works Program, which is also known as TANF. And it provides a subsidy for childcare to help people work or look for work. We have quite a history in the last four years with this program. So we get an allocation right now of about, now I put it in here, and I should know it by ear, I think it's about 82,000, right? Eighty-two, four-seventy-three. Eighty-two, four-seventy-three. So that's our allocation from the state. And four years ago, after sort of the recession in 2008, we chose to try to use our CCAP dollars by increasing the eligibility up to 225% of poverty. And what happened was, there were so many people out of work and looking for work at that time, that our caseload numbers went way up high. And to the point where I think the most number of cases we had in a month was 19 cases. We currently have six. And we brought the issue to the Board of County Commissioners and said, you know, we really, this is really not sustainable on our allocation. So the Board of County Commissioners decided in 2012 to reduce the income eligibility threshold to 185% of poverty, to eliminate a cap on the number of families, which they had previously set at 13, and to continue paying market rates. Those are the three areas where we have discretion with the CCAP program. So that's the income eligibility up to 225% of poverty, or I know it talks about immediate income, but it's so high that I think it's best just to think about the 225% of poverty, the cap on the number of families that we can serve, or whether or not we pay market or current rates that the providers pay. So different counties around the state have different income eligibility. Some are, have so much demand for CCAP that they only will pay 150% of poverty or less for CCAP. And then others who have more opportunity with their CCAP dollars raise that income eligibility. One thing to keep in mind is that we have to serve people at 130% of poverty or less, no matter what, we don't have a choice. And if you look at our numbers, in the past, I'll put this up here, oftentimes it's the lower-income families that, let's see, if you're, if you can see. There you go. Okay. So what I'm looking at are the number of families on the bottom chart. And if you look at July of state fiscal year 2013, which for your reference would have been July 2012, we had seven families at or below 130% of poverty, and then we had some at 185%. We currently, if you go, do we have like a little pointer thing?
Yeah, I'm a remote man. I should have a laser.
Okay, so this is so small. But here is January of 2014, what we just experienced last month. So we have two families at 130% of poverty, we have four families at 185% of poverty. And because we don't allow anyone to come in, we don't have any families above that. So it just gives you an idea, and this chart helps you see also how many children we have covered. So there are probably two children in each family, or something like that, or two or three children in the families.
Nan, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You said that the cap that we removed years ago was on families? Is it on families, or is it on kids?
It was on families.
Okay, so that if a family has 10 kids, it's only the number of families that would be capped, or?
Right. It was easier than taking in the number of kids, right? Because you, at a certain point, we had, we would have had 13 families and a 14th family, whether they had one kid or three kids. It was the cap on the families.
Even though the cost is directly related to the number of kids, not the number of families?
It has to do with the number of families in that income eligibility category.
So then on this chart, Nan, on the bottom, we have your totals. You have 54 kids, 32 families.
You are looking down here. Yeah. Yeah, and that is a little bit deceiving because families go from month to month. So that's sort of an aggregate look. And I don't know the number of total families that we're serving that are unduplicated.
Because you said earlier that right now we're subsidizing six families?
That's correct.
Six families. But they go month to month, so you've got a lot of, what's the word I want? A lot of people moving in and out.
We have some transients.
A lot of transients moving in and out.
Right. And one family, it might stay for the whole year. And yet other families might be there for three months, four months, until the season starts, or summer, or something like that. So what are, so I have in here, in your packet, a copy of the resolution that you all signed in 2012, and I'm sorry, I thought I gave you the fully executed version, I apologize about that. But you all decided in January of 12 to eliminate the cap and to reduce the income eligibility to 185. And that's the last change that we've had. And since then, you can see really, starting in January, that we've just slowly been reducing, reducing, reducing families that qualify, and we're not entirely sure. We are hoping that families are working, we think some families are choosing one person to stay at home because childcare is so expensive. We also know that the application is very difficult to complete. It requires a lot of documentation. And so Amy has been with us for a month and a half, and her job is to help families be successful with the application process. We had, we do have a number of families that start the application process and then drop out because they can't complete it, they can't get all the paperwork for all of their income or their expenses or anything like that. So we're hoping that having Amy here is going to help us get families enrolled all the way from the beginning to the end. We, and I'll, just to get to the point of today, is that our, okay, so our recommendation, staff recommendation at this point, we've only used in December 17% of our allocation. And over time, if we don't use it, part of the formula is utilization. So I am, we are recommending that we go up to 200% of poverty instead of all the way up to 225. From the work that Kids First did, they estimate about four families that would qualify in the range of 185 to 200%. We have Amy here who can help those families complete the paperwork, and they will, of course, continue to be supported by Kids First until they become eligible for CCAP. And then from the point at which you all have to sign a resolution agreeing to raise or lower the eligibility standards, we would be working from that viewpoint of 200% of poverty. Not recommending that you put a cap on families at this point, because I think that we come to you every quarter with our CCAP numbers, we can watch it, we can put a cap on families at any time. But the way the flow has gone is really, has been to our advantage. And I just think that we need to look for what I would consider to be an average of eight to 12 families on CCAP. And that might mean that sometimes it will be higher, and it will mean that sometimes it will be lower. But I think we can afford this amount with our allocation and the amount of the general fund dollars, which is only 15,000 that we set aside for CCAP. Part of the reason why we can do this is because you can buy CCAP dollars from another county if they're unused, 14 cents on the dollar. So we can get CCAP dollars really cheaply, and we can use that 15,000 to get all the CCAP dollars that I think we would need, or that we've needed even in the past four years to help us pay for this program, if we have to use county dollars. So that's my recommendation. Do you guys want to add anything to that? Oh, one thing is if we, the Kids First Board has decided, I guess, to go, they went down to 400% of poverty when we went down. For all the same reasons. Because, right, they had to watch their money, but their board desires to go up to 500% of poverty in order to help those low-middle-income families pay a portion of childcare. And they have a sliding scale, Shirley can tell you about that. But if we can, so a part of our going up to 200 allows Kids First then to go up to 500, and ultimately, we're able to serve more low-income families with childcare.
George, question?
Yeah, that was my question, comment. So by us increasing our guidelines, we can accommodate more families, which in turn allows Kids First to accommodate more families at that slightly higher level, so.
It's probably the biggest reason that Nan and I talk regularly is because we see the same things, just at different levels. At the same point in time that CCAP was having a high demand and overspending and looking to put the cap on there, we were also overspend in our budget for financial aid. So we were looking at where do we tighten the boundaries, reducing our maximum, whatever we have to do to accommodate those families that will be, in that case, picking up. And now it's the opposite. We are also underspent last year in our financial aid budget. So with or without that, we were looking at ways to expand a little bit, the families that we could serve and that we know they need help. But this is going to help, it's going to help those families get more help through CCAP, and it's going to help us expand and help more families on the upper end of that. So the scale that Nan referred to is a calculator that takes into account the family's income, the cost of childcare, and that depends on how many children, how many days, you know, which program they pick. And it determines, much like college financial aid, what the family's ability is to pay, and then the rest of it is picked up by Kids First. It's based on CCAP. We always have started where the CCAP maximum hits and go from there up. So we're highly, I don't know, dependent, interdependent? Codependent, something like that.
Not codependent enough.
With the CCAP program. So this, I mean, this is all good, it's going to help us all help more families.
And the lower-income families that Kids First serves get a higher portion of that sliding scale. So by taking even four or six families from Kids First, it's going to free up actually quite a bit of money, because it's the highest subsidies that they give.
Right, because at the high end of the scale, we're not paying as much of a portion of their childcare as we are for somebody who is much more low-income and needs a lot more help.
Couple of questions. If I, my memory serves me right, there, we can increase the eligibility tomorrow, but it takes a period of time to reduce it again?
Right.
We can't-
A year.
It takes a year?
A year's notice for the families that are currently being served.
So once the families are being served, it takes a year's notice before-
As long as they're eligible, they can stay as long as a year.
They can stay on the program.
If they become uneligible, then they go off.
And you said, well, I guess that answers the second question, which was said you can put a cap on the families at any time. Does that guideline apply to all three of those standards? The percent of market, the number of families, and the percentage of-
You can change any of those at any time.
Comparison to poverty level. The next question is, and I asked this, I think it was three years ago when we made that change, or two and a half years ago. What is the disadvantage to creating a cap as a fail-safe on a financial end, even if that cap is 30 families, 25 families, 20 families? And right now, we're serving, as you said, seven, six families. You said we may have an increase of four families, that's 10 families. If we created a cap back like we were, we did before of 18 families, I feel we would be pretty safe, but it create, you know, I mean, what if 100 families come forward tomorrow and we can't, even with the 14 cents on the dollar or whatever? I mean, that, I tried to make an argument to the board two years ago to have some-
Yeah.
-level of cap for that sole purpose.
And Shirley and I, I think that, I can almost remember part of the memo, talking about wanting to keep it as clean and simple as possible. If we end up with a cap, then some families will have to wander over to Kids First. But then we have this transience, and then we are underserving, and then we're overserving. So in any given month, the numbers are moving like this. And who gets stuck are our low-income families. And they, you know, that's, those are exactly the people who we don't want to have get stuck, because we have this bureaucracy. And we think we can absorb it, and we, you know, we thought that, of course, in 2011, but we went all the way up to 225% of poverty. I don't have a crystal ball, I can't tell you for sure, but it would be better for my department and my division and likely Shirley's if it was clean just around eligibility, and that we didn't have to communicate every week almost about whether or not we've reached our cap or we haven't reached our cap, is that family in or out? They get settled in Kids First, and then we have to uproot them and put them in CCAP with this onerous application. It's not, I don't think it's optimal for families.
And I guess part of my, I guess playing devil's advocate on this was, I think it's a healthy realization that there is a limit to what we can do. If 500 families came forward tomorrow, we would be talking about a cap. And I'm, again, I'm playing devil's advocate with this, but I think it's a healthy conversation to have, that this is an assistance program, and there's only so much money in it, and we're competing against, you know, at some point, we're going to be competing against other counties that also have needs. You know, that's, I think it's a healthy conversation to say- You know, that's, I think it's a healthy conversation to say, you know, we'd like to help everybody in all circumstances, but there are some circumstances where we won't be able to help everybody.
So, right, I'm with you. I hear what you're saying. Even if we set a cap, remember, at thirteen families, if we got a family at or below a hundred and thirty percent, or a teen parent, we have to serve them anyway.
And my, and my, yeah, I agree.
Right.
I understand that. And my, my compromise would be to say, well, when we get to fifteen families, and you're aware that we're at fifteen families, let's bring it to the board's attention immediately and so that we could have a discussion as to what that means. Without putting a cap in place, I think it's a, it's a number, I mean, I throw out the number fifteen, we could use the number twenty, too, but, and we may not even ever reach that number. But I think there should be a, a number where hopefully you come back to us and say, just so you guys know. And we do have quarterly meetings, so we do get this information on a regular basis.
Right, right. We do, we do present the same information, so you all will be able to watch the trends, and we can always institute a cap if there was a run on the money.
Steve?
You anticipate four more people that Kids First has identified. Are there kids from other parts of the county who don't, who are kind of off the radar from Kids First, maybe kids from the frying pan or the Crystal River or something?
Oh, that can't access Kids First or that?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, well.
There are, because of the boundaries that the city has set with Kids First funding. It doesn't mean they don't contact us and look for help, but not always. So, you're right. I think there are unidentified families with kiddos out there that might qualify. So, that actually is also a part of Amy's job, besides just helping people through that application. And by the way, I challenge any of you to go and fill out that application because it's not easy for most of us. But Amy also has been promoting this, and you might have heard us on the radio.
There's been a press release.
Through families, and providing those families through other nonprofits, through, through pediatricians, through libraries.
Libraries, yeah.
Churches.
We're working on a, an awareness campaign with the, remember, we've got a grant, House Bill twelve ninety-one for childcare, so we are able to use those monies for an awareness campaign. There isn't anyone in the county who can't access C cap, but there is a requirement for Kids First.
And if you live up the frying pan, you might be in Eagle, I think?
No, Pickens is up there.
Well, Pickens has some frying pan in part.
Yeah.
Justin and Pickens.
Yeah.
And Amy is, I'm trying to cover also the Eagle portion of the one, or as part of the grant. Amy's bilingual, fluent in Spanish and English, so that has been a big help, working with these families and getting communication out.
So, if there's, if there is somebody from Eagle County, they would, is it our, your staff who handles their applications?
It's Eagle's, Eagle's staff does our applications and their applications.
Okay.
Right, for public assistance.
Okay.
Right.
Additional questions, comments? How does the board feel about the recommendation at this point to go to two hundred percent, remain with no cap?
Yeah, I'm going to support it. I think it's interesting to note that the federal poverty guidelines, they were first instituted, or they haven't been changed since, I think, Lyndon Johnson's administration in the sixties, so it has not taken into account any inflation and any, any cost, nothing has, has changed. So, that two hundred percent is sort of meaningless in terms of?
It was based on food prices, I think, in nineteen sixty-four or sixty-eight. It's crazy. They get a little cost of living, you see an adjustment every year, but it's like, you know, pennies.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Yeah, I think it was determined that Pickens County's self-sufficiency would be about four hundred percent of federal poverty level, just for a family to live.
Great. Do we move forward with the resolution on this?
Yeah, so, at your direction, I will put a resolution on as soon as possible. I think it's a one-rezo reading because it's just a guideline, and as soon as we get that resolution passed, we can change the threshold, and we'll bring back the numbers every quarter through the Board of Social Services, so you all can be watching with us. And at the same time, as you guys know, there is a, a big bundle of C cap legislation going on at the state level, and I, I don't think it's really going to impact our decisions here. They're looking at raising the statewide requirement from a hundred and thirty to one sixty-five, and then they have a, a bunch of other different options. But I think the key statewide is how can we get C cap more out to people who are eligible for it and reduce the barriers. So, we'll let you know as that develops.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the memos of interest, and the first?
I can eat them. I'll share in the meat.
And the first memo of interest is the pro-challenge. For our bi-weekly update, we had an interesting conversation about bi-weekly, which is most commonly used for twice a week, and it is secondarily used as twice, once every two weeks, which is also known as a fourth night, which I suppose?
Fourth night.
Fourth night, which I suppose is Shakespeare language for every two weeks. But I said, we're not going to talk about this twice a week, are we, as a bi-weekly?
Only if you really, really want to.
Yeah. But I guess some, somewhere, bi-weekly is also referred to as every two weeks, but not as commonly as twice a week. Why it can mean two different things, I have no idea.
Tomato tomorrow.
But Cindy Hugan is here, and Nancy Leslie, and, and it's just a packet update, and I don't know where you want to proceed. Has a, has a special event permit been submitted at this point?
One has been submitted, and we are processing that, getting it out to the special events committee, and a lot of other things have been initiated, and I'll just go ahead and let Nancy do her update.
So, I'll kind of gloss over it because pretty much I don't, everything's in the packet, so I don't really have any new information. So, I'll just give you the bullet points, and then if you have any questions, please, you know, stop me or, you know, ask them. But we are in the process right now of doing our outreach to all of the caucuses, homeowners' associations, metro districts, businesses, things like that, the exact same format that we utilized last year. I think you got the list of emails, I want to say, you know, we're close to, I think, seventy people on that list, and I think we've gotten three responses back. None of them, none of them asking for any more information, just, hey, thanks, looking forward to it, you know, good luck. So, there's, I don't know if that means, I'm hoping that means we did a really good job of outreach last year, and so, since, you know, we're not changing anything, the, everybody's kind of seen it, felt it, touched it, knows what to expect, and we're just proceeding, but we are proceeding in our outreach as if it was last year, kind of year one, and, you know, there's a lot of information to put out there. The, the incident management team is still, they put kind of requests out for who wants to be on it. When they get all those back, collate them, then they'll set a meeting, and then that safety portion of it, you know, airport, hospital, you know, that, when that, that'll be at the time that that gets tweaked. We are, again, in our permit process, so we're just, we're just moving forward, we're just moving forward, I guess.
Questions, George?
Yeah, I, I, yes, I still don't understand why, on a second day, that you're going, that the proposed route stays on Highway eighty-two. You know, the, the first day, Monday, is going to be a, it's going to be an impact to the community, and we know that. The second day, we haven't seen that impact because in the last several years, it's gone over Highway eighty-two, so it hasn't impacted the commute or the businesses. We have an opportunity here to actually have a more scenic ride, to have more people to actually be able to watch the ride by using our secondary county roads versus just going down, barreling down eighty-two. And even though it's a rolling closure, I, I don't understand why. It seems like no matter what we say, the proponents say, this is what we're going to do, and if you don't like it, tough.
You know, we'll keep having that conversations with them right now, and I'll, what I'd like to do is see if they can come to one of these meetings. This was, as I understand it, Methodist Sports, Colorado State Patrol, and CDOT, kind of their preferred route, a lot of it based on safety. A lot of it was, from my understanding, was the fact that when we are leaving town, you know, we're going to go down Cemetery Lane, up and over McLean Flats, and hit Highway eighty-two at Smith Hill Way. And then, one of the reasons they wanted to hit Highway eighty-two at that point was because there are so many driveways and so many potential safety issues on back roads that are absolutely minimized on Highway eighty-two. And so, we can certainly keep that conversation alive and keep asking, and I'll see if in the future I can get, you know, Colorado State Patrol or CDOT or somebody here to, to discuss that with you.
Yeah, I mean, there's no fewer driveways on Lower River Road than certainly when they head up one thirty-three.
Well, we're not on Lower River Road.
No, but I'm saying.
Oh, on, on Highway one thirty-three, yes.
So, you know, to say that you're dealing with driveways.
Well, I think, so I can answer that one, because if you utilize them on Lower River Road, you can't utilize the same people on Highway one thirty-three. The race moves too fast. So, I think when you do take the race into a whole, when you do incorporate Highway one thirty-three with all those driveways, then, you know, what we're looking at is trying to get, you know, maybe instead of our normal two hundred and fifty volunteers, now we're trying to get five hundred volunteers to man all those.
George, can I ask George a question?
Yeah.
So, what, what route would you like to see?
Well, I, again, I, I would think as long as they're going to start in going up McLean Flats, rather than getting onto the highway at Smith Hill to go, continue down Lower River Road and get it on the highway at Old Snowmass Conoco, and then, from there, to ride eighty-two until you get to Elgabel, and then you can get off eighty-two again to get onto Catherine Store Road, the back road, and then your, eighty-two is clear.
Did we ask for that?
I did. I suggested it.
Nancy?
But, but I'm sorry, but I'd be, I'd be, I would be interested to hear from CDOT and from State Patrol about some of their safety concerns, because safety is certainly the number one, and if they view that as the safest route, I, I'd just like to hear their, their arguments.
And following up along those lines, too, I'm assuming that the route on eighty-two would be on the down-valley two lanes. The up-valley lanes would remain open as, as normal, so it wouldn't be affecting traffic there. As opposed to on Lower River Road, you would be closing the lanes in both directions, in, in essence, closing it down completely. And when you're following the bike race, they're going on, going down-valley on eighty-two, my guess is they're going thirty miles an hour.
Or faster.
Or faster. Because?
I do have a clarification on that. I learned from Brian Olson, who, with the Sheriff's Department, with the IT, the Incident Management Team, that in fact, there are places on Highway eighty-two where the up-valley traffic will be stopped because of the barriers, and the type of barriers or lack of barriers between the up-valley and down-valley lanes. So, if there's not a physical barrier, they will stop the traffic until the Peloton goes through, um, the up-valley traffic coming up.
So, perhaps from the Conoco station to?
I think that's still a discussion they're having.
From the Conoco station to Catherine Store, where there's no physical barrier between the lanes, meaning from, from Woody Creek to the Conoco station, you're on, you're on two different platforms on eighty-two. There's no way that a car coming up-valley can veer. Not all that space, there are some sections that they're together.
So, that, I guess that's a discussion, but this is the kind of thing that we want to keep having in the discussion, so it was really helpful that I've been invited and Mike's been invited to be part of that Incident Management Team, so that those kinds of things, when we come back to you with the actual application, the threshold kinds of questions that you're going to put, or threshold types of issues you're going to give us, the Incident Management Team is going to have those on their list as well. So, every time they meet, they're going to go, okay, hundred percent access to the hospital, you know, no more than thirty-minute closures, whatever the, your threshold issues are going to be when we look at the conceptual application. And that'll be coming to you, did Mike say, I can't remember.
The, which, the application, when it comes back to the board?
I have, I'm sorry, I don't know the date, I don't know the date yet, but it'll be coming back to you as a board for, I haven't seen that, the conceptual approval.
And just to, to finish that conversation, I think what George is asking for, or what I would ask for, I'm not really committed from one route or another, but it's nice that when we ask, well, why are you guys doing this, that we get a response to this is why we're doing it, as opposed, because I think that was our question, why, why are you guys on eighty-two? I'm, and I think eighty-two actually slightly in my mind seems like a safer route and a better route, so I'm not making agreements with George that it would be better on Lower River Road. But I think, from a process point of view, getting the response back that says, we heard you, and here is why we're doing this. Here, here's the, here's the thought process that we went through, because the worst thing is, is when we feel like we're not heard.
And I apologize, because after that last meeting, I did send an email saying, you know, the question on the table is, you know, why was this chosen? And the response was, it was a recommendation from CSP and CDOT for safety reasons. So, and we can certainly dig further into that.
And as Nancy's pointing out, I'm sorry, did you interrupt, but we do have a meeting with the Captain Duran, who's the head of the Colorado Department of Transportation, CSP, CSP for the event. And I'll have an opportunity Monday to ask him directly.
Steve? I, I'm wondering what the, the rolling road block is like. Is every driveway or access road ahead of the race blocked off with either barriers or volunteers standing there stopping traffic? The race goes by, then, how long? Can people immediately come out on the highway, right behind the, the final highway patrol car that would be following up the race? Or is there some time delay before they can come out, or how does that?
So, I was actually asking for clarification. I called the race director, the president of Methodist this morning, and just said, kind of, walk me through, you know, kind of the language to use on a rolling enclosure. And the language he said to use was that at a maximum, it would be a thirty-minute impact, and that would be if something got spread out. So, I think last year, when Chuck was here, he kind of was able to give you a visual, but there is that very first vehicle, and that's kind of when it goes into effect. And he's, whatever, again, CSP and everybody kind of deem is that, you know, is that barrier out in front of the riders, and, and that's what a rolling enclosure, that his, his vehicle kind of stops traffic. And then, you've got all the other vehicles, and then the riders and the teen vehicles, and then, once that race is passed, and it's the sweet vehicle, you know, that very last vehicle, it is literally wide open. It's just, you know, pick up where you left off.
Okay. And on the stage one, you had been talking about on the third lap, going through the, changing the route on the Brush Creek Village from the lower road to the upper one, and I see on this current map you have it just following the same route as last year. Was it decided to not do that upper loop?
It was. When, when they, when Methodist kind of had a team meeting and the competition director, Kevin Livingston, was weighing in on the conversation, he just felt that when he looked at kind of the whole race week overall, and especially day two, because leaving here is a pretty long day over some pretty, pretty big passes, he just felt that adding in that extra climb with the addition of, you know, the altitude and really what we saw, everybody kind of, you know, exploding almost just with the three normal laps. He felt that if we added in that extra, and, you know, but by no means do I really think it's a little climb, and I don't mean that. a little climb. And I don't mean that, you know, it's all a big climb. But, you know, by adding that little portion, he just felt that it, you know, would really exhaust the riders on the first day out.
Are they wusses? These hills around here are like pit bulls.
I think it's the altitude. I think it's that lack of oxygen that gets them.
Questions? Great. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
I'll see you in a fortnight.
I'm going to...
For sure.
Right.
White race.
I'm going to start using dates.
Next, we'll go to Future Agendas. Thanks, Rob. I really just have one item for the board's consideration. Now that tax bills have gone out, abatement requests are starting to come in, Larry has requested three to four hours. Now, historically, that time tends to get compressed once we get closer to the actual date. He's looking for a date between April 1st and 9th, or the first two weeks in May. In looking at our Future Agendas, it looks like there's maybe some potential to schedule those for April 8th. I have an email out to Jim right now to see if the, if we really do need a three or four-hour block, if we could move the Airport Service Transportation Best Practice Study to the 15th versus the 8th. We have a lot of time right now on the 15th, but unfortunately, Larry's going to be out of town and isn't available. My sneaking suspicion is, is that if we block out that time on the 8th after the airport transportation study, that'll probably be enough for the abatement hearings as we get closer. So we'll be looking at that. We may have some movement there. And then you all received an email from John Kruger, also just a reminder about the EOTC retreat on Wednesday, March 19th.
I never got that.
You didn't get that email? It is on our Future Agendas, yeah. So you should have gotten that. But just a reminder there. And that's really all I have for Future Agendas at this point. Anybody else have anything for Future Agendas?
Rob?
Yes.
In my conversation with Bill Blakesley this morning, he was indicating that he would like to have a work session with the county commissioners. And I'm, I think it would be a good idea, so I'm requesting that we do have a work session, and maybe would include Al Martinelli from the, who's the head division engineer, as well as Bill Blakesley, or whatever staff they think is appropriate. There are some different land use issues that deal with water rights that Bill feels like he has to clean up the mess that the county created by approving something or approving it without conditions or with certain conditions. One example would be if we require someone to have a pond for fire protection as part of their application approval. And Bill's dealing with a case right, one such case right now, where the person is required to have a pond. They went ahead and built the pond, thinking they were all, had satisfied the county conditions, but they did it totally contrary to Colorado Water Law and hadn't done, followed the appropriate, appropriate application to the water court and that sort of a thing. So I think it would be good. Plus, the, just this whole thing about the greenhouse and the requirements that they have for water rights for greenhouse and grow operations. So I think a work session with staff from the Division of Water Resources would be appropriate. And I have no idea when that would be put together, but...
And I think one of the things that would be crucial about that is fine tuning what the topic is before it happens. George?
I was going to just say, it seems like it may be more appropriate for the Division of Water Resources to meet with staff first, because they're the ones that are going to be having to address any of the land use codes. And we already heard from our attorney that we really don't have any decisions in terms of how water gets used from any permits. That's beyond our purview. So I'm not sure how we're going to really gain from that.
Yeah, one option we could talk about, and it may make sense for us to sit down with the ComDeb staff and myself, would be, you know, would it make sense to have them as an additional referral agency, so that you guys are getting comments back and we can, I think as John was saying in his comments, we obviously don't have any authority, but we can certainly coordinate with, and it sounds like maybe there's a concern about coordination. That would be one mechanism to do it. There may be others. And so if the board would rather us flesh that out a little bit beforehand, you know, I could certainly set up a time to me with Bill between Cindy and myself, and then we may have a narrower topic for a work session in the future. Michael?
Yeah, I think that's the approach that we should take. I mean, I'm not sure that even Bill is the right guy to address county land use issues. So I think that has to happen first. And if there's a conflict, it can be ironed out, it can be ironed out with the staff level, and the staff can inform us if they need to make any changes or would like to make changes.
Anything else on Future Agendas? I'm going to swap open discuss, because Rachel's not here, I'm going to swap open discussion with, with the board reports, just to make sure we cover things before we have to adjourn for our city meeting. Does anybody have any open discussion? Do you want to go first, John? Yeah, I got a couple of things for you. First, good news, the independents passed bill, passed on third reading today, so now it's on its way to the governor's desk for signature. And I wouldn't anticipate any problems with that. Second thing, we had a kind of a miscoordination with the city. When you guys had talked about potential topics, there were two agendas that you'd requested. One was wildfire, and the other was the Board of Health update. We were able to get the Board of Health memo. We had thought that the wildfire memo is going to have to wait for a future meeting, because there was, it was just not completed. We just got this morning that the city had included a wildfire update, at least from the efforts that they've had, and that that was placed on their agenda, wasn't placed on ours. We, I apologize, we had a miscue, and is actually on an item that we had requested last Tuesday. So I just wanted to let you know, this memo may be on our joint meeting agenda when we go over there. It looks like the two memos are the first two items on the agenda to, just see if there's any questions or discussions before we go into Centennial. I apologize, we would have gotten this to you, obviously, earlier had we had it. That's all I've got on open discussion right now. Anybody else having open discussion?
I've got a couple of things. Well, I talked to John earlier about a recycling issue up in Redstone. We're having a problem in terms of finding a site to put a bin. And I had a call from one of the residents up there, and they were going to meet with the Redstone Community Association to see what can be done, because we obviously want to try to keep recycling up there. So I asked John just to give us an update on what we're looking at.
Yeah, so the, we're still working on this issue. The issue really was, when we had originally anticipated the move to single stream recycling, there are a couple of things that we're anticipating. One, getting more volume with recycling. We're also looking to improve the efficiency of our process. And so what we had been doing with recycling in Redstone is we actually had a truck going up at designated times, and we had a crew sitting with that truck while folks would bring their recycling out, typically be a full day kind of affair, so that we weren't necessarily setting a container at a location that is available 24/7. As we made this, as we're trying to make the move towards single stream, one of the changes that we were anticipating is putting a container in the community of Redstone, so that you'd have something that is available at all times, and then there'd be a regular pickup. The equipment that Waste Management had available really was a 30-yard, which is a pretty large container for recycling. And so we've been having difficulty finding a location. And I think that's caused some concerns about, you know, what the future of the recycling availability is going to be. I have asked staff to go back and examine, you know, are there other alternatives through Waste Management, even if it means a modification to their bid that they gave us that we're relying on to go with smaller containers and more frequent pickups that may, you know, shake some sites loose? Or what if we went with the model that we did have, which is pretty inefficient, driving up and basically having folks, having our employees or having Waste Management employees sit with a truck for a specified period of time while people bring out their recycling? I wanted to make sure we had those options on the tables, table and price out. We're also going to have discussions with Open Space and Trails as they redevelop the Oak Park property. Is there an opportunity for us to maybe have a recycling facility be part of that with wherever trash facilities are going to be located? So we are still working on it and exploring alternatives. We certainly don't want to lose a recycling option in Redstone, because right now, there really isn't a good one in Carbondale, as we understand, or anywhere else that's convenient for the community. And that could be a last option, is whether Carbondale has any opportunities where we might be able to work with them, as that tends to be the commercial hub then for residents of Redstone. So we're working on it. We're going to try and identify a solution. That solution is either going to be finding the right kind of space to meet what we had anticipated doing with recycling there, or maybe a modification to our process, which may drive a little more expense. So...
Steve? On a related note, the recycling center in Basalt has been closed, and people now, their nearest options would be to go to Willett's, to the Waste Management facility, to drop their stuff off, or to go to the landfill going the other direction would be the closest option, so...
That is correct. And that was done in partnership with the town. I think the location of the current, of the most recent recycling center wasn't very consistent with where the towns wanted to go with their downtown planning. And that was anticipated when we made the switch to Waste Management, yeah. Are there open discussion? George?
Yeah, nothing. Just in light of today's discussion with cultivation sites, I'm not sure where the timing might be most appropriate, but I think it would be worthwhile for the board to do a site visit down on Jordan's site down in Basalt, as he's leveling that site down. You know, it was originally portrayed to us that those greenhouses would not really be that visible, because they might be on a lower bench. But as you drive by and look at that site as it's being excavated, it really is not a lower bench. So it might be a good opportunity for the board to take a look at the site, see what that 25,000 square feet would really mean and look like, and also if there's any discussion in terms of how we may obscure some of that through any birmingham or vegetation, which we never really discussed. So doing that earlier than later may give Jordan an opportunity to sort of rearrange the work he's doing down there while he's got machines down there versus when it's all said and done, and then coming to us for an application.
Michael?
That shot, the site is kind of shocking, but I would tell you that to visit a site in the excavation phase gives you no idea of what the product's going to be afterwards. And also asking Jordan to modify his permit, I mean, his permit's been issued. I think it would be unfair for the board to ask him to modify it. He's just not, it's just, if he doesn't follow the permit that we described, that he described to us, then I think we can ask him to live up to those obligations. But I think it's just premature, George. I understand how distressing that site is, but, I mean, all construction sites in construction are distressing. It's not until the final product is delivered that... So, but I would encourage other commissioners who may not travel that far out of, out of the location to go look at it. I'm sure Jordan will give you a tour. But I think now is a little too early to get into that. I think the larger discussion is the one we had today, which is, what's going on? What, how come we have three different, four different, five different, you know, names for what we're doing? Is it agricultural? Is it commercial? Is it residential? Is it, you know, what's going on? I think we need, that's the big question in front of us. We need to resolve.
So I understand. I agree with you, Michael. That's why I said, I'm not sure where the timing is. But again, as you drive by there, we would then wait till an application came in, and if we needed some variations of that, we would make some amendments then, in terms of fencing, or screening, or birmingham.
Well, I think that his application's in. It's been approved. It was approved by us. It's been approved by Community Development. It's only subsequent that, I mean, we can always ask anybody to modify their thing. They're not under any, we can't actually make changes once we've given approval.
If I could, I think you guys are talking about two different processes, because, Mike, I think you're talking about the building permit's been issued and the approval was given, and it's probably too late to go modify. And George, I think you're talking about when the site comes in for licensure.
Correct.
Oh.
As a cultivation site, and that we use the licensing procedure as an opportunity to maybe say we want some additional screening or that sort of thing.
I see what you're saying.
So, and we can wait till then. I just didn't know, Tommy, if the board wanted to sort of take a look at it, get an idea prior to that, when that application may come in, or we can wait. I'll just throw that out.
Steve?
Yeah, I would think when the application comes in would be the appropriate time to do a site visit. And doing a site visit to a proposed grow operation, I think it's totally appropriate, like we did, well, you know, the Lower River Road application that we did, the site visit, was for a greenhouse, but in our minds, we all knew what the intention of it was there. So I think we need, should look at, you know, a grow operation application just as if it's a land use application. And if a site visit's appropriate, let's get it scheduled in and do it.
Okay. But back to Michael's point, should we, when we go and look at Future Agendas, should we put together some work session time in terms of discussing the zoning and the overlays?
You know, there's probably a couple of ways you could approach it, because we are going to, we have an obligation to bring back the medical marijuana regulations to you for adoption. The idea was to adopt something similar to, or in substance, the same as what we did with recreational in terms of process. That may be an appropriate time to revisit that discussion. I think there are really big policy implications, you know, about where the activities could take place and not take place, and what that means. So we could probably approach it a couple of different ways. We can pull that out as a separate issue, or we can keep that on the radar screen to revisit as we talk about the medical marijuana regs and the rewrite of those coming forward. So I don't know if the board has a preference. I think it may be better to look at it as a whole package when it comes back. And then if we need to, we've got to bring the recreational back for revisit, too, if you guys are going to change kind of the direction on agricultural versus commercial versus, you know, where it can take place. But it's probably one of the biggest policy decisions in the... But it's probably one of the biggest policy decisions in those regulations.
I think we should put it on ComDev's radar, that that's going to be part of the discussion, and they can start creating a file for it, I guess.
Just so you know, ComDev has pretty minimal actually involvement. This has really come through the attorney's office and now the clerk's office on the rules, so...
No, but I mean, in regards to how we potentially might zone a, an agricultural zone, one of the options is, is to create a overlaying zone, whether it's allowed or not allowed for medical cult, or marijuana cultivation, whether it be medical or marijuana, to create a whole new category was one of the proposals that John put forth. And that would be a ComDev thing in terms of how it fits into those charts of allowed uses for each one of the districts.
Well, maybe that should be a separate, let me talk to John. We've got some open times coming up, certainly in our work sessions, so we can either consolidate that discussion on the medical marijuana, or maybe we break it out as a separate.
I think it might be wise to know what direction the board would like to go in before we get into that consolidated conversation.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Well, if the license only lasts for a year, I mean, I think we can consolidate it into our current, our current retail regs. But going forward, because these are very short periods of relicensing, we need to somehow reconcile inspected by the IBC in a residence under agricultural with a commercial well application, those are all, we need to somehow reconcile that in a way that makes sense to the public and makes sense to these agencies, the fire departments, the state water, whoever it is. And so, because none of it reconciles now, unless we do it under a given definition by our community development that's agriculture. And if we just follow that very narrow directive that the community development is operating under, then there's some internal logic to it. There's not much external logic to the process at all. So I think that's the big question in front of us, is reconciling all these, all these different aspects of the marijuana thing. And I think that could take a year, literally. So I don't want to put off consolidating medical into our retail things at this point.
We can split those up. Other further discussion, open discussion? We've got about ten minutes. Do you want to try to tackle some of our board reports? I don't have anything at this point to report on Northwest COG or Royal Reserve Region.
On Northwest COG, I did go to the thing Friday in Edwards and heard Governor Hick and Looper speak. He kidded about his name too, how people can't pronounce it. The general topic was talking about the Colorado blueprint for economic development, but he really talked about a wide variety of subjects, and a large part of it was just a question and answer period. So the question I asked him was about the relationship of the Colorado Water Plan with the Colorado blueprint. And I expressed concerns that the West Slope wants to keep our water over here for agriculture and for, you know, in just the general keeping healthy flowing streams for our tourist economy, and then also just to send water downstream to fulfill the obligations of the Colorado River Compact. And he told about that being at the Western Governors' meeting, and they were in the White House and received communication from the White House that they are very interested in helping the western states to address the issues of, you know, drought issues and trying to instill a sense of cooperation and communication amongst the western states to help solve the water problems. And he thought that was very interesting, that the White House wasn't seeing it as the federal government imposing conditions on the western states to solve the water shortage things, but more to try to get people at the same table talking. And that's kind of how he said for solving the Colorado Water Plan issues is to get the facts out there, get all the sides to, different sides to establish relationships and sit down together to talk about them, and then to do the compromises to solve the problem.
Neat. Cor?
We haven't met yet since the last time we had reports.
Rachel's not here for QQ. CCI?
CCI, let's see, I forgot to print out, there was a thing I should have printed out that I probably better get that to John since I won't be here, but it was something that we might want to discuss. I'll just make a copy of it or forward it to you, but it was something that was forwarded to us from CCI. In terms of the bills, the one that didn't directly affect us, but the election of county commissioners by district bill was PI'd, which I think is, was a good sign. Gail Schwartz's Water, Ag Water Efficiency Bill, Senate Bill 23, she told me the other day, it's struggling on the floor, and she really needs support on that from the Basin Roundtable, hasn't voted yet to support that, so... The thing about the assessment of greenhouses I talked about earlier, and then there's a Forest Health thing that Millie Hamner is sponsoring that has passed the Senate that's moving forward. And another one about agricultural prohibition on agricultural burning and fireworks during certain periods of time is moving forward in the legislature. So those are ones that seemed applicable to our area.
Ruapa?
Oh, we have a meeting coming up this week.
Akra?
The last Akra meeting, the recycle made a presentation, a very good presentation. I think you guys had seen it, and I haven't seen it here. So Akra was delighted with it. And then Mayor Steve Skadron brought up the issue of imposed tips on bills, on restaurant bills. He'd gotten a complaint from someone. And Akra took up the subject and generally denounced, you know, putting a surcharge because somebody's speaking with a certain accent on the bill. And so I don't know where that's going to go, but it was viewed as anti-tourist, anti-business and searching for quarters while, while you really need to be, as I think one of the, you want to make customers, not a dollar. So that was, it was a very strong conversation, one of the strongest conversations we've had at Akra, so that was interesting. And Rafta, to tell you the truth, I can't remember much of what went on at the last Rafta meeting. We had one coming up this, next week.
Senior counsel, Nordic counsel?
Nordic counsel, George is our rep now senior counsel. I wasn't able to go to the last meeting. I was a member for CCI.
Anything on Nordic counsel?
Yeah, Nordic counsel is going to, we had a very short presentation from the biking community. There's more and more interest in terms of the Pugsleys, which are the bikes with the really fat tires, to utilize some of the trails. And there was a, during winter school, there was an experiment out on a Maroc property that will continue the rest of this season, which is just about over. But I encouraged them, the bikers, to meet with the Nordic counsel alongside with Open Space and Trails Board to have sort of a broader discussion. And so that will probably happen this spring.
Intermountain TPR?
Intermountain TPR, we just started to work on our long range plan, which goes out to 2035. And we were able to keep on the list of projects along Highway 82, including the interest to Aspen. So that was good. We were asked to send a letter, I don't know if Brian's talked to you, a letter to our transportation commissioners, because there is a discussion down at the State Transportation Committee to change the way they allocate dollars to the different regions. And right now, we get about 17% of these total dollars, and are looking at, looking at population as one of the determinants, which means that the front range would of course get a few more percentages, and we would see our percentages drop from around 17 to 14%. So Eva, who has served the coordinator for the TPR, was going to draft a letter for us to look at and then have it signed by the chair and sent to our transportation commissioners. So you may want to follow up with Brian on that. I think timing was kind of tight on that.
Okay, will do. And that's it for our board reports. We'll now adjourn and meet over at City Hall in fifteen, twenty minutes.